Committee of the whole format, do I have such emotion?
So.
Moved by Joanne, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roman and Mrs. Sander.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Knicker?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes. We are in committee of the whole format now and we have two items tonight, instruction, social emotional learning standards, and technology and update there. So Dr. Harris, I'm going to turn it over to you in your staff.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson, and good evening, board members. We do have very, two very important topics this evening. The first one, as we begin, is on social emotional learning standards. As many of you know, that in the state of Illinois, we do have those standards. There are expectations that we provide instruction and curriculum around each one of those standards and programs as such. This evening, Joanne Panopoulos is going to give an update on where we're at in District 200, a range of information to where we are, where we've been, where we're at today, and where we're headed. So I'm going to turn it over to her, and then we'll have time at the end for questions and comments. We are going to be doing a little activity here in a few minutes, so I'll let her set the table for that, an interaction opportunity.
All right, thank you, Dr. Harris. And before I begin, I'd like to just make the board aware of the materials that are in front of you that we'll be using during this time. So you should have the PowerPoint, and then underneath that, you should have a separate set of handouts. One will be labeled Activity, another one is labeled Examples of Keys to Success, another is labeled Examples of SEL Competencies, and then the last is labeled Districtwide Supports. And as I talk, I'll let you know what materials we're referencing during that time. So as we think about social emotional learning, we always think about what is the goal and where is it that we want to go. We always think about what is the endpoint for this year. I have to say, I am very thrilled, as I've been working with social emotional learning this year with our committee. And the reason I say I'm very thrilled is because not a lot of school boards and school districts will have social emotional learning on the top of their priority list. And we do in District 200, and I'm very sincere about that, because as we did go through and really take a look at other districts and see where their priorities were, not all of them were very explicit about it. And so I do have to commend our board and Dr. Harris in terms of the goal this year and saying that our goal this year is to establish a plan for the implementation of SEL. So that is definitely an excellent priority for us. I'm not going to read this slide to you, but I want you, at this point, before we do anything, to think about social emotional learning and what that means in your own mind. We've talked about it before as a board, we, you know, I've shared this information a little bit last year in terms of where we are, but just think in your mind, I want you to just kind of take a second or so, just to think about some of those key words that come to mind when we think about social emotional learning, and even so specifically to students, and then even think about adults, as we as adults. I'm sure some of the thoughts that came to your mind are ones that are similar to what we see here on this slide. And the benefits of social emotional learning is just as important as the benefits of academic learning. I'm sure you've heard the phrase of the emotional quotient, very similar to what we would take as the academic side being the intellectual quotient. So we can think about social emotional and the fact that it is supporting our academics. There's no doubt that when we are emotionally stable and we're emotionally fit, that academics will go hand in hand with that. Now, what I'd like you to do is take a moment. In your packets, board members specifically, have a green placemat, call it a placemat. So you should have two pieces that I'm going to reference. One is this chart that has the five competencies, and the second is that green eight count by 11, which are the Board of Education Principles of Operation. What I'm going to ask you to do first is take a look at this page here, which again, is a reflection of those five competencies that tie in specifically with the Illinois State Standards. Those competencies not only are on the overhead here, but they're also on your page here. Now, again, we know that these competencies come from CASL, which is the Collaborative for Academic and Social Emotional Learning. It is one of those organizations that helps guide social emotional learning in the state of Illinois, and other states have been using it as a framework as well. We see five areas as competencies that are strong indicators of success, if indeed we have all those pieces that can come together and can work for people. And I say people because I'm talking about students and adults. So what I'd like for you to do right now, is this is about a five to seven minute activity, but on your own individually, I'd like you to take a look at these competencies, and think about, in these five areas, we have self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And within that, there are specific skills associated with each. Take two minutes to yourself, and go through and identify what skills within those competencies are strengths. Feel free to mark a plus sign or a star, and then take a chance and take or take a moment and identify maybe some areas that might be areas for improvement. I think we all can say there's definitely areas for improvement in any of these, you know, specific competencies. So I'm going to go ahead and give you two minutes to identify those two pieces, strengths, areas for improvement, and then we'll use this information. We're not going to be sharing out loud with anyone, so don't feel as though you're going to hit on the spot.
So it's our personal strengths and personal...
Yes, your personal strengths and personal areas for improvement.
So put you and yourself at this moment, self-evaluation here.
Okay, you may not be finished. That's okay. Gave you a chance to kind of assess where you think you fall in those areas. I know, one of my strengths is definitely not managing stress. I know I tend to take on a little bit too much and get overwhelmed. If I could just manage my time a little bit better. But what I'd like us to do next is take the information that you just went through, and if anything, it's more of an opportunity for you to understand those five competencies and how those can relate to applying it in our daily lives. So what I'm going to ask that you do next is take a look at the Principles of Operation that you have, and on the right side, there are the expected behaviors. And those expected behaviors are, if I understand correctly, what the board has all reviewed anytime any of the board members have come to the board. And what you'll find is, if you look through those, that there should be and there will be connections to some of those skills that we just identified in those five areas. So what I'd like you to do is take 30 seconds or so, review that on your own, and then I'm going to ask you to get with a partner and go through and identify some of those verbs, some of those words that relate specifically to those competencies on the sheet. So I'll give you a couple minutes to do that and have conversation with a partner about those connections between the competencies and those expected behaviors. All right, I know you're identifying individually on your own, but feel free at this point to turn to a person next to you and have some conversation about what some of those examples were that you found within the expected behaviors.
Just to understand the assignment, the behaviors, which one of these goes in here?
So like even just...
Okay, I know you could probably keep talking for the next 20 to 30 minutes about this, but I'm going to go ahead and pull us back together, and anyone would like to just share the value in us going through this? Any comments from anybody? Any ahas?
No ahas, but this should probably be rewritten. I mean, you pull out a lot of the same adjectives, and, you know, respect, integrity, opportunities, optimism, that are all in here. Or maybe you could re-craft it a little bit differently to really dovetail into that goal two slides back, or especially when Jim and Brad are sitting up here in the board retreat sometime.
Thank you.
Way back in 2001, I think.
Any other thoughts on this? Rosemary and I were sitting here working too.
I think just the fact, and I must maybe, you know, pointed some of this out, the overlap that there is between all of the different competencies and then the behaviors. You know, there's a lot of overlap between this document and that, but even among any particular behavior here, there can be more than one competency that's involved. So there's a lot of overlap on those things.
Yes, there definitely are. And the whole idea of this activity is to also show you that these are the types of things that we're going to be looking to do with our adults, and we're going to be looking to do with our students as we make those connections, help them make those connections, I should say, and their everyday types of learning that happens, whether it be academic, or even outside in the playground, or walking in the hallway. So there are plenty of connections that we can make, and you're exactly right, Rosemary, there's a lot of overlap in terms of those competencies, and there might not be just one, but you might have three competencies that address something in terms of problem solving and being able to take perspective of others and accomplish a task. So you're exactly right.
And if I may, I think this is a bigger challenge because of technology. You know, a lot of people tend to deviate from these principles or the desired outcomes because of having access to technology and abusing it, and hence abusing other people's feelings. So I think it's a bigger, a bigger, you know, spectrum than what we're... It's going to make it more difficult, is what I guess I'm trying to say, but because of those outside interferences, if you will.
Social media is huge. I mean, that piece of it alone, you know, the devices the kids have, and, I mean, as you know, with your own kids, it's significant. And it becomes a bigger challenge than what we maybe experienced as kids or in the past. It definitely is becoming a bigger, major challenge.
All right. So I'm going to move on, and all this is connected, as we know, to college and career readiness and preparing our students for the world beyond District 200. And if you remember, we have our Keys to Success that was in this booklet as an overview. And with that, we look specifically at, back up, to those two keys to success, one being demonstrating academic proficiency, and the second being to think critically and problem solve. Both these keys go hand in hand with social emotional learning. One area that we can focus more and see it embedded more is, again, in thinking critically and problem solving. So when we look at how our buildings are doing and moving forward with social emotional learning, I do have to say that this year, with our design team, that is our specific SEL design team, focusing on that goal, or the goal that originally was set in the very beginning here, is to establish a plan, that is what we've sought out to do this year. With that, in any large undertaking and moving forward in initiative, it's very important to take time and to really learn about, and to gain information, and assess where we're at. So with our design team this year, that's what we've done. And in addition to the original design team, which was comprised of members across the district, representatives, we've now included more parents on the team. We have two additional parents. We have Barb Intihar on the team, and we've been using an outside consultant from our regional office of education, Ruth Cross, who is a coach for social emotional learning. So we've been really fortunate to be able to expand our team and get the different viewpoints and the expertise from a coach. And I did forget one other individual that we added from the curriculum department or Ed Services Department to help us as we now move forward with the curricular pieces. So getting back to those success indicators, I'm not going to read these out loud to you, but in the gist of it, basically, we look at all of those, early childhood, elementary, middle, and high school, to focus and have our students be a part of problem-based activities, learning activities, so that they can be using those types of skills that I mentioned in the five competencies, being a part of a school-sponsored service project. And then also, at the elementary level specifically, is focusing on positive behavioral support and establishing a universal system at that elementary level that really has a built-in success rate for students in terms of understanding how they are to approach another student, how they are to walk down a hallway without bumping into somebody, what the expectations might be in the lunchroom and on the playground and in classrooms. And so with that, there is another handout for you, and it's those examples of keys to success that really outline what is happening at the elementary level in each of these three indicators. So there's a sheet that is dedicated to give you an example of what specific problem-based learning activities are happening, school-sponsored projects, and then those positive-based behavioral systems. Again, this, I can't reinforce more that this year is really a year for us to really get a sense of what we are doing, assess where we are. And so this is just excellent data for our principals, our schools, to really take a look at what is happening in our schools. I'm going to move on to middle school. And in your packets, the same exists. So the next page should be middle school. And again, those success indicators with samples of what happens at the middle school.
So just to be clear, these are actually examples of what we're currently doing that would indicate success.
Correct.
It's not what you're thinking might happen, this has actually occurred.
Right, so this is, everything that you have in front of you is our examples that are currently happening in our schools. And then the last is high school. And in terms of those success indicators, you can again see that on that third page, where there's examples of activities happening at the high school level. Some of these examples that you see in either elementary, middle school, or high school are also ones that are embedded within our current curriculum. So in your packets, you also have a separate packet that shows the examples of the SEL competencies within District 200. And so some of these examples that you see, in terms of those success indicators, are also related to what happens on a day-to-day basis in the areas of health, PE, collaboration and leadership class. So what I've done for you is very similar to our activity. If you look at the example of SEL competencies, you'll see that I've kind of circled and highlighted some of those examples of how our current curriculum connects or is integrated with the SEL competencies. So as you're looking through the examples, I wanted to mention, last year when I presented to you, I explained the timeline that we were moving forward with social emotional learning, and as we were implementing and schools were beginning to form their PLCs, specifically at the middle and high school level, PLCs devoted to social emotional learning had been created at the middle and high school levels, based on the nature of folks that are in those buildings. So social workers, counselors, and then teachers at the high school level, some nurses. And those PLCs at the middle and high school level were given that charge to really focus on social emotional learning, but more specifically with the Illinois U survey. And so that is something I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear on, because I know we have, we talk about PLCs all over the place, and yes, they're happening in all of our buildings, but specifically at the middle and high school level, we've been using a PLC specifically to address social emotional learning. Yes?
Sorry, what's up, Parent Cafe?
Parent Cafe. So the Parent Cafe is basically, in this packet, of Districtwide Supports, but they're opportunities for parents to come to a seminar, and they're offered eight times a year, organized through our social workers, and really giving parents an opportunity at lunchtime, because that's been the time which we've really found to be most successful in terms of attendance of parents, to get that information that they're asking for. And I can go into a little bit of detail about that. So leading right into that, those Districtwide Supports that were really helping our parents in outreach, as you, as you mentioned, even those Parent Cafes, we've offered them in the fall and the spring, four in the fall, four in the spring, those strategies really to help parents, and it's a gamut of topics. So anything related to adolescence, communicating with your students, being able to talk to your children, I should say, managing stress and anxiety. And then I also put on the right side of that, the amount of attendees, which I think are just fabulous numbers to be coming during the school day or during the workday. You know, the average is 50, 48, 58, 57. Parents come during those times. Donna Kosika, I forgot to mention, I apologize, is just the one who spearheads those and really organizes those with her department of social workers. So it's really been just an awesome opportunity for parents to be able to get that information. And I've also included some of those other samples of advertisements that we do for our parent groups. As we've noticed, an increase of students having access to substances. By all means, we want to make sure that we're supporting our parents, and with that, we've been reaching out more with our police departments and our community services and offering more opportunities for parents to get involved. And so examples of that are also in that packet. And, you know, the turnout rate, again, has been excellent. Again, various topics of conversation, mostly all, again, around substance abuse, but that proactive approach is what's most important. Wanted to just talk a little bit about our crisis team that we have in District 200. We have an awesome, awesome system set up, and it sounds to me, and I know that Donna can even speak to it, that other districts are yearning to have what we have in District 200 in terms of crisis team. It's a, it's a combined model in which we have crisis support at our district level. So we have a district crisis team, and then we also have support in each of the buildings. So each building in our district has their own crisis team identified. So in the event that there's a crisis in a building, that building team gets together and determines if they need to reach out to the district level team, in which the whole advantage to that is that the district level team could then go in and support and restore that stability for the school, so that the learning environment does not get interrupted. So it can look and look different in many different ways, but at the same time, there's a solid process in place and a nice framework in place so that everyone knows how to handle the situation, down to the point where there are templates, there is exact training that's happened. And as a matter of fact, we were just able to do a system-wide training this past spring, which has been very helpful, and a lot of great feedback from those who've been involved, because as we know, crises happen, and we need to be ready for them.
I think an example of, you know, just most recently, we've had, you know, loss of students, and I mentioned that at a recent board meeting, and that's, that's a, you know, a crisis. And it takes days, you know, sometimes weeks for kids... And it takes days, you know, sometimes weeks for kids to struggle. And I know the staff has worked very diligently to, you know, make sure that we've got the appropriate supports in place, because kids are fragile. And, you know, and those type of things get in the way of the academic expectations, and we have to pay attention to that. And I think that's the important piece here, to know that we do have excellent supports in place and things have gone well, relatively speaking, when we have had these tragic events occur with our students and sometimes staff even at buildings.
All right. So as I described earlier, our SEL design team this year, our charge has been to make sure that we find a plan that's going to work for us in District 200. And with that plan for district implementation, sure, we have wonderful things happening, no doubt, in all of our buildings, as you've seen those examples in the keys to success. And those are some indicators that we use. However, we want to make it systemic, and we want to make it so that everyone has an understanding of what SEL is. We're using a common language, we're using common expectations across the board, and it's systemic. So this year, we've been focusing on, again, learning about social-emotional learning. The awesome piece that we were able to do this year was be beneficiaries of this foundation grant, which I mentioned Ruth Cross, who's the coach, our coach, I should say, from the Regional Office of Education, has been extremely helpful, knowledgeable, and even more so, given us the opportunity with the grant money to have our entire team, which was 16 members, attend a workshop focusing on how districts go about systematic implementation of SEL in their districts. And we did learn, it was very reaffirming for us, that, okay, we're not moving at a snail's pace, even though we felt like we were, but more so just understanding what it all takes in order to move forward. And so we walked away with some excellent information, excellent ideas about what we need to do to move forward. Two other things that we've tackled, one more specifically, is the Illinois U survey, because that is something that I shared again last year with all of you, in terms of our middle and high school teams focusing and using that. And then also the Five Essentials Survey, which is actually currently happening right now, and I'll talk about that shortly. I'll get a little bit into that Illinois U survey and just share with you what we've done this year. So if you remember, that Illinois U survey is something that's provided to school districts every two years, really focuses on getting information from our sixth, eighth, 10th and 12th graders. We chose as a district, after talking to our administrators, that we wanted our eighth, 10th and 12th graders to take it. And so those are the students who took it last year. And the focus again being on looking at some of those at-risk behaviors, so that we can gather some data from these students and determine if we need to make any types of instructional changes. And so with that, the data came back to us and focused on certain areas. Yes?
Yes, I'm sorry, you need to explain this to me, because I'm looking at the numbers. And if I give it to six, eight, 10, 12, and I offer it every two years, then the same students are getting it two years from now. So what happens to the students in between? They never given this questionnaire?
Right.
This survey?
The goal is then also to look at the longitudinal data for those students, so they're eighth graders, the 10th, and then we can compare, so progression.
That's exactly what it is. It's to track their behaviors over time, to see if interventions and things are, make a difference on risk behaviors and decisions. That's the whole intent.
Okay, so this is, this is more of a, okay, so it's a survey for information to come to?
For schools.
Not necessarily the individual.
Correct. Correct. It's really about looking at our programming and interventions and supports and see if we need to change anything to address.
If you remember, it's a free survey too. The State of Illinois provides it free as of now. I should say that it has been free in the past. So you never know with the state, but it does continue to be free. It's a great survey, it's a great resource that we can use to help us make decisions.
And those decisions we make are based on these areas. The survey is actually, it's lengthy for the students, however, it's not one that I would say we should not partake in by any means because of its length. But it's so thorough that you get information about substance abuse, you get information about bullying and dating violence. School climate is covered in there in terms of how students feel and how connected they feel with the teachers and how much input they might have into instruction. And then there's also a portion of questions that relate to nutrition and obesity and how physical students are and how much time they spend being physical and how much time they spend sitting behind a TV. So this next slide gives you an overall, what I try to do is give you a sense of the overall impressions of the district data. Before I start talking about this, when we get the survey data back, the Illinois U survey data, each school gets their own individual report, and then there's also a district report. So what we did was, once we got our results back, is I met with each of the school principals and their assistant principals and anyone else they chose to have, and shared that data with them and gave them some guiding questions, so that they could really go through that data and determine what are the strengths that we see in here, what are some areas of concern, anything that we need to do that we're, you know, need to change up in terms of instruction. And so with that being said, each of those principals then had used their SEL PLC that I described earlier, that PLC really designated to focus on the results of the survey and what they could do differently, if anything. And so those are really up and strong, going strong and making changes. But this is just an overall of the district results. And on the left side, you'll see those areas of how the data was organized, and then celebrations, and then of course, opportunity for growth. There's always going to be opportunity for improvement. And, you know, in terms of this information, we know substance abuse in general. Good thing is, it is less than what is in the State of Illinois in terms of the average, because they also will give you the average for Illinois for any of the questions. So each of the questions have that comparison. However, we do know that at our high school level, that unfortunately, our students are taking advantage of the alcohol. And so as I showed earlier, those parent forums, those parent organizational, those nights that we offer for parents in terms of outreach, is what we use to target and help to decline in the area of alcohol and any substance abuse for that matter. Interpersonal violence and safety, again, we're very comparative to what's happening in Illinois, if not probably better. However, we do know that bullying prevention is an area that we can continue to grow. As we looked at both middle school and high school, it tended to drop off at high school, it was more prevalent in middle school. I think if you know developmentally, that's probably where it's going to happen more. But again, middle schools are aware, and that's something that they've indicated that they'd like to work on. School climate and mental health, same thing, very comparative to Illinois. I described that we, the benefits that we have here in District 200 is a very solid crisis team happening both at our district and our school levels. And then again, we just need to continue to pay attention to the emotional wellbeing of our students. Other indications that we have are just how our students are performing on a day-to-day basis. We look at how students are performing with their grades, how much interaction they have with peers. And then physical health is that last area. Overall, we came out fabulous in terms of physical health with our students in District 200. I think a lot of it can be attributed to the fact that we have PE on a daily basis, which is unheard of for a lot of districts. But students also participate in physical activities outside of school. And what we will do is just continue to educate and monitor that. I've given you breakdown then, also with the middle school results and high school results after. I'm not going to go through and go through each one, I did for the districts, but similar The best part is, again, that each school had that data. There were the middle schools and the two high schools, and they set teams so that they can really delve deeply into the data and figure out what it is that they can do, if anything, to make some changes and improvements in what they're doing. The other task in general, or other sense of information that we get as our SEL design team, is the Five Essential Survey. And this is something we work in collaboration with the Educational Services Department. Five Essential Survey, I know Faith has mentioned it before, but it is one of those surveys that is new this year for us and all of Illinois, I should say. And it's a requirement. And at this point, it was administered this spring, really to help us find out a little bit more about these areas. These components, there's five components that the survey addresses. It looks at qualities that effective leaders might have, collaborative teachers, supportive environment, involved families, and ambitious instruction. So those five areas are addressed within the survey. And the survey is given for middle and high school students and parents and teachers. And we will be getting this information in June, the survey results, I should say. And again, we'll be working closely, I'll be working closely with Ed Services Department and figuring out a way which makes sense in terms of our staff, our principals getting the information, using it to our benefit.
Karen, wasn't the Five Essential Survey also given to elementary schools as well?
Yes.
Not to the students. Staff and parents, students at middle school and high school. Hey, a good one, side note to this, we just, I get weekly emails from the state on this, and we did get the required amount of parent surveys at every school. And that was the work of some of our Educational Services Department. I know Erica was involved in a couple of schools going out and trying to provide opportunities for our parents. So we actually hit that mark, and so we're very happy about that. So we will get the parent data. Not all districts are going to get it, because they had to get 30% to get that data, and we got them all. So every school. So we're going to get data for every school, which is great.
One common critique I heard from a number of the middle schools I went to was that the survey asked the parents to evaluate their student's teacher. Of course, that works at the elementary level, but they had, parents had difficulty answering that question for, you know, middle school students, we had a number of teachers as well as high school teachers. Is that something that's going to be changed? And is there any?
I'll answer it. We hope so. That's going to be the feedback loop to the state. You know, the University of Chicago put that survey together, the state provided it for us. You know, we weren't involved in the development, so, but it is an issue. Parents had a hard time, especially middle school and high school, you know, different teachers have different opinions on, very difficult. The other thing is, it wasn't always real clear, if I have a kid at every level, do I do the survey three times, or, you know, which school to pick? So there was a lot of confusion, again, coming from the state. So these are all lessons learned, and I'm pretty sure will be corrected moving forward, and that was all over the state of Illinois.
So those components include, as we said, the five, excuse me, the five essential components were based on 22 measures. So with that, out of those 22 measures, four specifically tie in with social-emotional learning, safety, school-wide future orientation, what students plan to do in the future, student trust and expectations for post-secondary. So those specifically tie into the social-emotional learning, but of course, any of the other questions you can see can relate as they ask about teachers and so forth. So as I said, this data is going to come back to us, and in June, we're going to look at it and focus on what it means to us and if anything, we can do to change instruction, set goals for ourselves. And then we get back to what the original goal of the board was and Dr. Harris's goal in terms of social-emotional learning for the year. The year was to establish a plan, and this is a skeleton of our plan. Our plan still needs to evolve. We're actually meeting this week to, next week I should say, to really define it. But what I have here is a sense of what is happening from year to year. This year, year 2012-13, again, I described already what we've done, really a year of learning, really a year of getting information, understanding how to move forward, taking our time to set up the right process. Next year, our goal is to really focus on establishing a common language for all of our staff and establishing an understanding of those competencies and the standards. And so very similar to the activity that you did today and understanding what those competencies are, we're going to spend all next year focusing on just that. We need to explicitly teach these skills. We take for granted oftentimes that everyone should know how to behave with their peers and everyone should know how to handle a conversation if it's not going the way it should, or it's an adverse kind of conversation. Not always the case. And so next year, our goal is to really define it for staff and apply those competencies and set a goal for ourselves, so that we can measure how it is that we plan to get there. Following year, we'll be looking at evidence-based strategies and really starting to take a look at how it is that we can get those materials and supports within the buildings, but we'll be piloting those first. And then we're going to look at connecting those with the SEL standards, the SEL standards to the common core. Example of that is very similar, some activities we might do is very similar to what you have in your packet of the District 200 curriculum and how SEL connects, how it intersects. So those are some pieces that we're going to be making our staff aware of and helping them understand how those connections can be made on a day-to-day basis. And then in 2015-16, implementing those programs and then looking at a way to monitor So this brings us to the point of basically making sure that we as an SEL team provide our staff with the understanding of the benefits of social-emotional learning in general. And that comes in when we want to build consensus. So next year, our goal is to educate our staff and really help them understand the why, the importance of social-emotional learning in a day-to-day, day-to-day activities. So that's where that consensus building comes. Building infrastructure, we'll be building that infrastructure by, again, setting up the types of the school teams. Right now, we have school instructional teams that look at academic achievement data. We're also looking at behavioral data, but we're going to be more explicit with what types of data to be looking at, what types of expectations for students to be looking at. And so we're going to, we're going to really need to set that infrastructure, so that we can support our staff. And that infrastructure also includes the professional development opportunities. It includes time for staff to understand our plan. We'll also be reviewing data sources. Data sources can include anything from how it is that we're going to monitor SEL in that building, to how we're going to monitor how SEL is happening at our district level. And the same goes with that measurement of implementation. Looking at those data sources in addition to the Illinois U survey, looking at data sources in addition to the Five Essentials, our other data sources that we use on a day-to-day basis that staff will be using to see if students are able to have appropriate conversations with their peers and if they'll, you know, able to greet peers at the first grade level without, you know, just walking past them and not saying hi. So all those components are really where we're at next. Again, this year, mostly about getting information, learning about SEL. Next year, it's taking off and really moving forward.
I think one of the key things I want to reinforce, you know, again, as well, is we have to be confident that all staff are involved in this. There can't be exceptions. We have a lot of teachers that are very aware of this, you know, and work on this on a daily basis, but we probably have some that aren't as knowledgeable. I mean, all of you, you took a look at it earlier. You know, you, I mean, you, this doesn't foreign language to anybody sitting around a table. However, when you start to apply it to your own, you know, you start looking at, you know, where we, you know, our rules of, you know, behaviors as a board, you know, what are some connections, where are we at, where, what's missing, what may be already in place? That's the activities that staff are going to be doing at the buildings, at all levels. Next year, making sure that there's a clear understanding of what these core competency areas are, because if staff fully understand it, then that will translate into the classroom and continue to work on those activities and areas. If we see gaps, we see areas of improvement, that's what we'll target moving forward as far as that. So I think that's the, the problem with SEL is, it always tends to take a backseat. And I think that's unfortunate. And I've said this to my staffs over the years, over and over and over, and I know staff here has heard me say it, happy kids will achieve at a high level. You know, you have to have balance. You have to. If you just focus on rigor and the academic component, kids will fall off and you lose them. You have to have that balance, and it's so critical to maintain those citizenship aspects as well as we move forward, because that's the holistic approach that really has to be taken when you focus on heightening students. Any questions, comments, thoughts? Got it this time.
Do we not have a question on the, on the district results slide? Do you have any data, share some data with us on the less than Illinois average? First of all, what's the Illinois average? And how much less were we than the Illinois average? And then compare that to our own high school data? How many students took it? How many students related alcohol use and so on and so forth? students related alcohol use, and so on and so forth?
I didn't.
Go ahead.
It is on.
And the others too, comparable to Illinois, so I don't know what, I don't know what the...
Right. I didn't bring the exact data results with me, I certainly should have those with you. However, I do know that when I say comparative, it was within two or three percentage points. We were very much in line. There wasn't anything outrageous in terms of us doing better than others in Illinois, or worse. But, again, there are so many slides on each of those, because each question literally had data pieces for it. So there are literally about 40 or 50 slides of comparisons.
If I remember correctly, you know, to kind of answer your question, less than the Illinois average, there was a statistical significance, anytime you look into stats, that we were significantly statistically below the Illinois average. However, I, what I, one fact that stuck in my mind, that I remember looking about, we had, it was, near, they were nearer, over 90% of our high school students by the time they graduate, our 12th graders, have, had used alcohol. And so that was pretty significant, and that, and she referenced that here in this, in the one slide here about alcohol use at the high school level. It's, it's a very targeted, as kids, this was self-reported by kids, and by seniors in high school, high percentage of our kids, you know, have, you know, used alcohol, and drank, you know, socially before. And so I think that was one thing that really, it jumped out at me when I looked at it. And one of the reasons why we spent a lot of time looking at some of our parent resources, and how we're communicating, and also, as we move forward, the kids at the staff level. I know that, I don't know if that answers your question, but I can tell you, it was a pretty high number. It jumped out at me right away when I looked through the data. She is right, there's, I don't know, 250 pages of data behind this, and we can get the information if you'd like to take a look at it.
I'm just curious as to the, the numbers, I mean, comparable, like how, what was, what was the state average, you know, in terms of the numbers that took it? How do we rank in terms of numbers, you know, rather than just...
There was not a ranking, because not every district took this survey. So of the districts who take the survey, you know, they do statistical analysis. So there is percentages, and there is, you know, ranges is what they have, of where you fell in regard to the state average. And that's relevant, too, because the state average might already be higher.
Well, that's what I mean, what is the state average, and what, where do we rank based on numbers, rather than comparable?
Yeah, I would misspeak if I were to say anything. However, I do know, for example, it might say that, because it does it by grade level, too, so eighth graders, and how many have, have taken alcohol for, within the last 30 days, how many have done it in the last month? And so it might even say 70% of students in Illinois at the eighth grade level have tried alcohol. And then district wise, it'll say 68% have. So that's how it's reported out. But I certainly can get you...
Well, I don't need the 250 pages worth of data, but just, you know, some numbers to make comparisons here, rather than less than or more than the comparable state average, because you don't know what the state average is, first of all. And we don't know how many of our kids took it, and how many kids in the state took it, just to look at some of the data.
Right. And we won't ever know how many students in the state do take it, however, these are percentages of the students who've taken it at each of the levels. So...
That was our students, and the percentage of the kids in our district that actually took the survey this past year. And we do have the data, and we can certainly, you know, forward that. It's pretty, and like Joanne said, for every question, there's, you know, like in the alcohol question, how many of you ever, you know, in your life, then in the last year, then in the last 30 days, the last week? You know, and so there was a ratio there, and it was a sliding scale depending on where we set. As I said, the alcohol one was clearly the one that stuck out at the high school level. I mean, that's why she referenced it here. We can, there, the summary, there is not an overall summary data, it's pretty complex. And that's why individual school improvement teams dig into this and look to see. And every school's not, is a little different, you know, depending, I mean, those aren't all identical as well, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
I'm just curious about, again, the alcohol usage, and was there anything in there about, again, the Illinois Youth Survey was strictly the students, is that correct? There was not a parental...
Correct.
Okay. So we don't know, like, how many of these kids drink with their parents' permission, let's say, or...
Well, it's a great question you asked.
Because that's a critical piece. If we're going to educate kids, you know, maybe we need to bring in some parents and educate them.
You're exactly right. And that is one of the questions, or a couple of questions are associated with it, is what are the influences? Is it okay, you know, do your parents know that you're drinking alcohol, and then where are you getting your alcohol from? So there are definitely questions that give us indications of whether it's okay, it's okay to be, you know, drinking in the home, or my parents are aware of it, but I drink outside of the home. So all those pieces, and that's exactly what the high schools were specifically able to delve into, is where the source was coming from, and if it was okay, and then we need to educate our parents more so about, it's not okay to be authorizing alcohol. So that's specifically with one of the plans of the high school.
You know, if the board so wishes, we, I mean, it's a whole nother lengthy report that we can provide, you know, details on the data, or we could do an executive summary and try to pull out the relevant facts, where the outliers. And when I look at data sources, that's usually, I'm looking for outliers. You know, where are we out of the norm? And that's why we identified it here. But certainly, the data's available. And the key is going to be the longitudinal data, because as we start to do things over the next couple of years, you know, the next time we come back, we can certainly start to say, okay, back in '12, here's what was reported, then in '14, here's what we're seeing. Now, I don't know which way it'll go. We hope it goes to the good, but, you know, that's what we can start to look at with that, with that survey.
I mean, I don't, I don't know that we, what would we do, or what decision would we make at the board table, you know, if we were to ask for an executive summary, would that, would that, I mean, I don't see any, I don't want to make work for anybody, but if, if you think having that survey would result in our making better decisions about something, then, you know, fine, otherwise, I'm, I'm fine with this report.
I don't think, at this point, there's specific things, you know, that we would be asking, or there's not some significant trailers right now. There might be, you know, where we might come back and say, hey, we may have some staffing implications for mental health staff. We might, you know, but I would, I wouldn't want to base it on one survey. I want to base it on some work, some intervention. You know, we may come back and say, you know, based on our data here, we maybe need to be more explicit in a very, in a, create a course at, at the high school level, that, you know, it's a semester course, and we require all kids to take for alcohol and substance abuse awareness. Some schools do that. I'm not saying, you asked me for examples, that's where board action would probably play into, for materials, you know, staffing, you know, curricula, or, you know, what are those types of things. I guess that's the examples. Right now, we're at those preliminary stages, but however, I do think, and I can't, in looking at the crystal ball right now, but I would say that that's where some of this may lead over the next couple of years. Does that make sense?
Definitely.
Joanne, I'm really pleased that there's been this effort to have these parent cafes and parent seminars. Share with you some of the concerns I've heard from parents, particularly with the number of extracurricular activities, their, their children are engaged at high school level in order to have a great resume or application for college. And the kids are stressed out, much like the Race to Nowhere film that was shown in Hubble a couple of months ago. And if we can educate parents that, when we emphasize social-emotional health, and having our kids involved in extracurricular activities and community activities, it's in order to get a connection to the community, and a connection to the school, to enhance their awareness, and not to embellish a resume for college. It's to help the child more than anything else. If we can educate our parents, and I think that applies also to our alcohol problem here, it's, we have to get the parents involved, it's something we just can't focus on the kids. So I'm encouraged to see that you're, you're going that road.
I have a, go ahead, did you say something?
No. I was going to come, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I was going to go on a different, slightly different...
One quick thing, I know Mr. Gambiani, Mrs. Swanson, were at the scholarship luncheon, where you're going to go ahead and comment. I was just going to say, you heard those kids are some of our top-notch kids the other day, what was their theme?
Right. Just about every, well, the prompt at the scholarship luncheon this year, every year, and these are high flyer kids who have received scholarships from, through the PTAs. And every year, they come to this luncheon, they get their scholarship, and they're given some prompt, you know, what was your favorite teacher, who's helped you the most? This year, it's what was your greatest challenge to overcome? A few of them, who were athletes, centered on some sports injuries, maybe four or five. The rest of them all said stress from time management, and from having to make choices, or not being able to make the right choices, or feeling like they were just overloaded. Every single one of them, aside from the athletes who were home recuperating from their, from, so actually, that was one thing that I wanted to bring up, is, you know, will our social-emotional learning, and I know that's a very specific targeted area, but it just was so obvious when you sat there and you listened to that, that that is something for our students that's, well, their biggest problem, is that.
And even those, and if I remember correctly, even those who were out of school for the time that they were, based on their injury, they were stressed out about having to make up the work and getting back into the realm of school. So, you know, it's exactly it. I mean, time management is one of those skills that falls under, you know, personal organization, and so it's, it completely ties in. And again, you know, we see it as students, and we see it as adults. I think we all can, you know, acknowledge some of those areas that, wow, if I could do this better, I would be a better, you know, person in general. So it definitely all connects, and you're exactly right. One other thing I did want to mention that I forgot to, was that on Monday, we're actually having visitors from Singapore visit us at Hubble, because they want to see how districts in Illinois are implementing social-emotional learning, specifically the area of DuPage. And so we're going to have some visitors from the Ministry of Education from Singapore. Again, this is a connection that we have through Ruth Cross, the coach that we're using from the ROE, and she brings us, like I said, extremely valuable information. She's not only familiar with what happens in Illinois, but across the state, and then also nationally, or internationally, I should say. And so we're going to have just a short period of time with them. Dr. Harris will be joining us, and we're going to be sharing, Donna Kozak, and myself will be sharing what we've done with social-emotional learning so far in District 200 as we begin. But they want to learn from us, and so we're taking that opportunity, and we're welcoming it, so we're excited.
The thing about, yeah, the thing about that country is, and if you've read some of the recent information, they've got the academic thing down, okay? What they, but what they found out is, their kids, when they get into the workplace, they can't problem solve. They can't, they can't work in a team. They can solve any math problems, any physics issue, they can, but they can't collaborate, they can't work together, and they can't think as, as a group. And they're very concerned about that skill, and Americans are the best at that. The innovation, the creativeness, the, you know, the collaborative nature, and they know that. That's why they're here. And so they're looking, you know, to see what some of the most successful schools in the, in the United States are doing, and hopefully take that learning back and implement it. I know that's the case, and I've read things recently, not only Singapore, but some of the other higher-performing areas of the world, they're, they're looking, because they know the Americans are the leaders, and all the innovation in the, in all, in any, any particular area. And so they're real interested in that. So thanks for pointing that out, I forgot about that.
Piggybacking on Rosemary's observation from Monday, and Jim's question as well. When we talk about stress on students, I mean, I think a lot of it comes from their parents, quite honestly. I mean, I think if the parents don't have balance in their lives, and if the parents have aspirations for their children to all go to Ivy League schools, and Stanfords, and all that of the world, I think the parents exert the pressure on the kids, and the kids feel as though, you know, they're letting their, their parents down if they don't get accepted everywhere they apply, and so on and so forth. So I guess, are we, are we looking at maybe a parental component to that education for, for those students? Because I, you know, the students, this is the first year I've missed the scholarship luncheon, and it does, takes your breath away, when you hear about, you know, you know, how they solve, you know, world hunger, and they've done all these other, you know, things while maintaining a straight A average, and getting a 36 on the ACT, you know? And I think a lot of that comes from parents, and I think parents seem to be sensible about, look, you're, you're going to do well, you're going to get in to where you want to go, just follow these things, and don't make yourself crazy doing it. And if you don't get in, because you didn't make yourself crazy, well, you're probably better off.
We certainly can weave it in, I think that's a task of our SCL design team to do as well. I know, Donna, you can also speak to what we already do.
We have actually, over the last couple of years, offered probably every year, of class, four parents on when is too mu, when is enough too much, and how to have balance, and how to manage time, and have talked specifically about that issue with parents, about getting into colleges, and the stress kids are under managing, you know, just their everyday life and the extracurriculars. So we've had that theme many times throughout our parent things, and even the high school, when they had their freshmen come together, they had Dr. Michael Maniachi talk about balance in kids' lives, and what's important, and how to support your kids through that. So, and I think the other thing is, too, is colleges have now said, it's more important that you have a theme of being involved, like you stick with one thing, not that you have to have 40 different activities. They are now looking more, because they realize that that's, that's not good balance, it's not even, it's probably just a touch of each one. They'd rather have you in one thing, either a sport or something throughout, and in terms of developing yourself as a person.
I can see that showing more perseverance than anything. And it's something definitely that we can look at as an SCL design team, as we look and rule out professional development, and all the supports that we're going to put out for our staff, but also for our parents, and communicating to them, and how they can be involved and supportive.
And just one, one quick question for me. Eventually, is the idea to have something on paper as to what a plan is? Like, when we have academic learning standards, there's a curriculum that says how we're going to address it. Will there, for the social-emotional, it seems to me our school district has done a great job, just almost you could say accidentally, but intentionally accidentally, doing a lot of good things in that arena. And so I'm just wondering, how are we going to corral all of that into something that's perhaps more focused to achieve anything additional above what we've already had? Is that the eventual idea? Is that there'll be some written plan?
Definitely, definitely. We look to start with integrating right now, and just seeing how we connect our SCL standards to, is this better? Connect our SCL standards to the current curriculum. And then we also intend to have a timeline, or an expectation for each of the grade levels, and how we're going to address each of those standards.
Lots of times, the most significant thing I've seen, and you have a copy of the standards here, so there's three, yeah. And one of those, one of the things I've seen, lots of times are clumped together, because they tend to be, the ones, districts that I've seen have been real successful with this, you may, you know, and, and like math, you've got real targeted things, and real targeted academic targets. But in that, there tends to be, in like primary, intermediate, maybe early-middle, late-middle, and then early-high, and late-high type of themes. That's what I've seen, a lot of districts go about doing that. I'm not saying that's what we're going to do, but I know that, because it's about time, you know, where do we do it? Do we have an explicit class at high school, do we not? Do we weave it into social studies? That came up the other day in discussions, you know, about citizenship components. How can we, you know, PE and health and wellness is another opportunity. So I think that, yes, the answer is yes, but it may not be in the form that you've typically seen. Does that make sense? You know, with, with other core content areas.
Okay.
But the standards, it's Joanne Heather.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, go ahead. I was going to change topic, so finish, if you want.
So, but, so as I understand it, as I understood from our meeting, the last meeting I went to, I forgot what it was, but, so these won't necessarily be separate standards, but they'll be embedded into, let's say, Common Core Math, Common Core Language Arts, so that you won't see a separate curriculum, because we don't anticipate taking time away from academics to teach these things, but they'll be woven in. So they'll learn team building by doing team projects, and that'll be part of...
Instruction.
Instruction.
It'll be, it'll be integrated.
And instructional methods.
Right. We anticipate that they will be integrated. We'll start by integrating that, very similar to what we were kind of doing, some of those activities today, and looking at what... activities today and looking at what the example of you have in your packet. But then we also will identify and say, okay, by first grade, we want to make sure that we're addressing goal 31, 32 and so forth. So we will get to that point and it could also be already embedded within what they're doing. Right.
Love the fact that you have a coach and that the region can provide that and that is, because why not go from an expert and/or what other schools are doing? And where are our other districts kind of doing similar things? And will you pull in more experts for specific subjects or, I just love to, you know, reinvent the wheel again, you know, saying that one.
Well, Donna and I, and actually Joe Kish, attend a professional learning community, they call it, through the Regional Office of Education that's focused on social emotional learning. So that occurs about four times a year. And that is how we even knew that there was an option for us to get, you know, a scholarship. And so that alone in and of itself is where we learned directly from Ruth Cross and the other woman is Marjorie Cave, who focus on all the information that districts can benefit from. And so there's, at that point, I would say there's at least 20 school districts that are in that, that attend those meetings in and out. And so some of those districts are further ahead in implementation than we are, some are behind us. And actually, you know, the benefit of that is just learning from what everyone's doing. There's always a chance where there's a topic of whatever it might be in SCL and then we get a chance to really learn what others are doing and have those crosswalks and talk about how we're going to integrate into Common Core and how districts have gone about including parents and where they are in their implementation stages. So that in and of itself is an excellent resource for us and take advantage every time we can to attend those meetings, bring it back and work with our SCL design team. And then in terms of the other question you had with actually getting the grant, there's only three districts that are able to get that grant in DuPage each year. So when I heard they were still looking for someone, I was like, take us, take us. So we were very lucky. And again, it was, we would not have been able to get it if it was not a goal for our board and even with the, you know, unanimous priority of Dr. Harris. So they don't even consider districts if it's not a part of their strategic plan or their goals. So again, kudos to us to have it as a priority.
Yeah, Ruth wanted to meet with me to make sure I was on board, right? And I said, I'm there.
Well, I'm going to employ the core competency of time management here and say thank you very much unless there's a burning, other questions from board members on this topic because I do know we have an update on technology. Thanks.
Okay. This, this is just, that particular topic will be ongoing as we move forward and continue to be a primary focus for the wellness and, and social emotional health of our students. Another topic I want to do a little pre-conversation, I refer, I turn it over to Rod, is our technology progress in District 200. Before I do that, I received a letter yesterday, or actually it came to our office, it actually is addressed to the Board of Education. I'm going to pass this letter out and it's from one of our students, has to do with technology. It's to all of you, to the Board of Education and copy, as you can see on the date stamp here, I received it yesterday and read it late yesterday afternoon. This is Connor Zydak. Connor has no idea that I'm sharing his letter tonight at the board table. He's a sixth grader at Monroe and he writes this letter and I will say, wrote it very well, and you can see that when you go through it. And I'm going to highlight a couple of things. He's talking about in his first sentence that I believe that the school should provide iPads for academic use, okay? So he's even got the solution here. And he, I'm not sure if Max in our near future, but anyway, he thinks it should be. But what he gets to here is some of the key phrases, and again, I'm not going to read it to you, you can read it on your own, but he talks about the economic advantages of using less paper and not buying textbooks anymore because it's all digital, okay? He references that there in the first few sentences. He goes on to say that if all the work is typed, I can interact with my teacher in a very 21st century way. Now, that's my words, not his words, but essentially that's what he's saying. I can edit, I can correct, I can get it back to him or her, they can interact. So he's, you know, he's basically making the case for why this tool is so critical for his own learning. And by the way, he's going to be with us for at least six more years, so he's a sixth grader. And then in conclusion here, and it gets to the big question, how do we pay for it? If you look down there toward the bottom, he goes, so how are we going to pay for all these iPads? And he has, is the key phrase that I love, this will be an ongoing process. He sounds like a different tenant. And he says, and he goes on and he says, you know, but grade by grade, basically he's talking about implementing it. I think he wants his grade next year to be first and then he can just, I can see where he's headed with this, that he can have this tool in front of him for many years to come in District 200. And he gives a couple of suggestions there and how he thinks that we should look to move forward and incorporate this technology for his learning. So in his final three sentences here, I just wanted to read those. He says, thank you for considering my request with determination. We can work together in our district to use technology to further our education. If we work together, we can change the future for everyone. So I am going to follow up with Connor tomorrow and I'm going to just go over and meet him and I, I did see his picture, I looked him up in the student information system that Mr. Max is going to be talking about here this evening. And typical sixth grade student and telling that I did use his letter this evening and that the board is well aware of his ideas here. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mac and hard act to follow here from one of our students with his ideas. But I think what's interesting is it fits exactly with what we're going to talk about here this evening, about some possibilities here to where we were, where we're headed and into the near future. So kudos to Connor here for his work. Mr. Mac.
Thanks, Dr. Harris. Yeah, he shared this with me today, he was going to do this, this is perfect. This is just perfect. I didn't put Max in the presentation yet though, we'll figure it out. Just like Joanna with the SCL, this is where it relates to the board goal for the district. The big part down there for the milestones of 12 and 13 school year was to provide professional development opportunities focused on improving the integration of technology in classroom teaching. Everything we do is to improve the 21st century skills. I'll go over a little bit here, the kind of where we've been, where we're going, is kind of the whole part of this presentation and where we're at right now. Take everybody back to, I love going back to this one. Our progressive dip is what we called it. If we, if we were to focus, this is the end of the summer, we're finally coming out of the dip. And this has been a challenging year, it really has been. I'm not using this as an I told you so. It's more of a, we knew this was going to happen, going through this type of a massive change where many systems have been in place for 10 plus years that there was, you know, a lot of change going on, new infrastructure, everything kind of coming out. That we do see, we see we're going up, we're starting to, we see that light at the end of the tunnel. This, this year again with synergy and a few other things we'll talk about here, we're a little bit more challenging than we probably expected, but we do see that we're at this milestone moment where we're seeing the crossroads of everything really starting to progress and changing and moving forward. Another slide you're used to, the only thing I did here is I did adjust the figures, I noticed that down there from the bottom. The original time this was presented, two years ago, it's exactly the same. It was always based off that very first year's budget of whatever, 143 million or whatever the whole district budget was. All I did was plug in the PMA stuff here to show the progression of really what does that, if you remember, the initial thing was to say we probably needed some type of a percentage increase to get us comparative and then do staged increases after that. There could have been an argument to, no, we need to fully fund this all at the front end, but we knew that too much changed too fast would have really just put everybody over the edge and we tried to do this in a stage approach. This is actually, then this next slide is more of, actually what it looks like is last year we really stayed kind of flat. We did use the, the grant to pay off part of that budget lease, so we didn't increase the budget to stay flat, but to stay on par with what we'd always planned on doing, we still have to shoot for. This plan, this five-year plan was always to build some type of a financial stability to a sustainable level. Back to that dip slide, that we really need to work up on increasing that budget so that we do get to a sustainable level where, again, in 2009 or whatever, they said, you know, it was at 3% of the district budget. You know, for us to stay there for a few years to actually sustain, and again, most of districts in this area, at that time in that study, were at the 2.5 level. We were, we were much below that and I'll go over some of that in the next parts too. But just to show you what we did do, last year we stayed flat, there was no increase. We really only had one large, large increase, which about doubled the technology budget in that first year of the five-year plan.
And Rod, just. Just to clarify, yeah, just to clarify for people who may be watching or listening for the first time, when you're referring to this dip, it was a planned dip, correct? I mean, I think that's a key thing that people need to understand is that that was planned and then it's, it's moving upward from there, it was part of the plan. Right.
I laugh every time they have problems with this. No, I'm not. Yes, you're right. It was, it was part of it. We, we, going into it, you know, that, that first, the, the current, the first time I gave the presentation, we were over here. If our money stayed flat, our, our services were going to stay where they were. But we knew even increasing that first year, it wasn't going to make everything great because the change was going to be the impact, the, the changing all, you know, the way everything had been operating for years, change is hard. I mean, we're, it's, it's especially where it was so similar for so long for so many people. One of the big things that we, you know, we get now with principals from other districts coming in, staff members from other districts coming in, we're still doing some things that they're coming in, oh, they've been doing that for a few years. We're still behind, you know, in some of this that, but that big dip, and I want to call it a big dip, was because we knew we were changing. We were changing all of their email systems, their communication systems. Yes, improving things, but changing for 2,000 people can be difficult to get them all, you know, again, I think Brian's used a reference before of, we're changing the tires on the semi when we're doing 80 miles an hour down the highway. I mean, that's what we were trying to do, that we knew it was going to be a little more difficult before it got better. The, the, the amount of change we were doing was monumental. So what have we been doing these past two, two years? Just a refresh from the very first year of this, we refreshed the elementary computers. Remember at that time they were in their seventh year, going into their eighth year. The big thing last year was these switches, wireless and voice over IP, changing the phone systems. It was a big network project. That actually went very well. I mean, we, the wireless was much needed. Part of the big changes that did affect a lot of people was changing the email and network operating systems. That mean going from Novell group wise environment to a Windows Active Directory environment. Exchange and Outlook were well received, but there were problems with that transmitter, you know, when we transfer all that data. A lot of people told me I should have just started new. Hindsight's 2020. This past year, we did the middle school refresh, all middle school desktop refresh synergy in its first year. Last year was the first year that the district has really pushed out a large amount of mobile devices or laptops. Those did go to all schools and special ed. We had the new library management system, Destiny, and we had two large system changes in our first ever management system that allowed us, if you remember, a few years ago, I try not to say anymore, was our touch and all philosophy. The case system really got us away from having to do that touch and all philosophy where it could push out updates, do system updates, remote imaging, really take away the need to have every machine touched every time Adobe didn't update. Sopos also updated our network security systems on the PCs and allowed devices like this, when they do leave, to still be protected outside. Previously, if it was a district laptop, when it left, it wasn't filtered, it wasn't, you know, if someone took it home, it was like on their own home network. It allowed us to secure the, the device being used and still be secured and filtered correctly. Our targets of last year, this was a slide from last year too, where we had three customer service, reliability and professional development. Those are three IT targets, they were one of the last slides I showed last year during the update. How did we do? The ticket numbers, we closed 7,031 since the first day of school. That does not include the first three weeks before school starts. I can't even tell you how many for those. We almost stopped keeping track, but you know, here's, here's one number that's, it could be disturbing, but at the same time, it depends on which lens you look through it. It takes on average in March, 53 hours for us to close a ticket. So if someone opens something at Monday at 8:00 AM, it might not be fixed till Wednesday at noonish. Now, that's on average, some of them get done a lot faster if they're just logging, things and stuff like that, but the amount of staff we have and we're, we're still plugging away, but it's just the amount of turnaround time it takes us to do sometimes simple tasks, sometimes in the last three days, we've moved our whole staff to Hubble, so I mean, some tickets haven't gotten done at all, but thanks to the flood. But that's a number we want to see go down and we can't do that without probably more staff, which we'll talk about a little bit later. But in our uptime statistics for the reliability part, we have been up, if we were to take the hours, 99.78%. Now, that seems really good, but if you ask anybody else, they don't trust the network still, because those three or four outages happen during the day and those two hours are more than a point hundredth of a percent of uptime. Again, we consider it 24 hours, we're up 24 hours, my guys are on call, they don't like that, 24 hours when things go down, but we've had two large district wide email outages where the system filled, you know, mistakes on our part, that lasted at least 12 hours. We did have one day of the high school email, it only really affected the high school database. I can blame that on power because it was caused by a power outage, but either way, we should have a system that can depend on that and not have to be part of the power blips in the, in the area. And then I do laugh, the day before spring break was our actual ever first full outage of everything. And that was actually partly because of a switch in the basement that someone plugged in and not this current flood, but the one from three weeks ago where we only got about some splattering. It was wet and it actually set the entire system into a electronic cycle and it lasted about an hour until it turned on. But because everything routes through this building, it was the first time it cut everything from access to drives, to internet, to everything from the building. I was with my daughter at the doctor's office and didn't find out until it was all back up, so I was happy. But I had a lot of text messages in that last, in that one hour. So I mean, we have, but again, 99.78 looks great, but our goal is 100% uptime. We haven't hit that yet. We, we hope some of the work we do this summer will, you know, make that a guarantee that we can have that. The other thing was professional development, we did have numerous courses, this is just a few of them that were offered through my learning plan this fall, from iPads in the classroom to Google Docs, Microsoft Office, Smartboard training, there were a few others there. These were topics that were picked by a survey that was done at the end of last year as to what they wanted to train. We had staff trainers that were doing it, teachers were offering these courses. We've also had institute day training for aides and support staff, both one in, the most recent one that was done over at Arrowhead that was well received and we did another one that was off at the community center where we did training. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of those here in just a bit, but we get a lot of compliments on the trainings and things that we do. But we can always offer more. And the one I always comment on that really went really well was actually a one computer room with 80 people getting technology training. Not the best way to plan technology training, but it was still very well received. It shows that they were actually very interested in what they walked away with and they had enough knowledge and were shown enough that they were interested enough to go back and see some of that stuff. So, you know, when we can do that, imagine if we had headed into the mall with the computer in their hand at the same time. It would have been glowing, glowing, glowing remarks, so. Some good things, some celebrations. We have received two national recognitions, two separate print articles. One of them, I believe, has been shared with you previously in the EdTech magazine in the winter edition of 2013. Because of that, we were also approached by the Center for Digital Education. This has not been released, released yet, I have a PDF version of it. So until it's released, released, I guess I'm not supposed to release it. Based off of that article, they wanted to do follow-up on what it is, you know, the work that we did. Main reason is a lot of the districts that are going through, are doing the stuff we did two years ago now. Many had, you know, had focused on devices and hands and other things and never had that network. Because of testing and things that are coming up, districts are now struggling to get that foundation piece. And we started with that foundation piece. And it, it shows that when people are reaching out, it's, it's a, it's a wanted, they want more information on what other districts are doing. So the second article when we hand it out to you is actually, it comes up with 10 things that districts should do when they're planning for something like this, from the perspective of us and another school district, I can't remember where, in California, was the other district that was, commented on that one. The next thing I'm going to show is actually a video that's a follow-up to the EdTech article also. I don't know that, they haven't seen this. Have they, is this in chair? Okay.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
Of course.
When I came here in 2010, the IT infrastructure was very archaic. There was not a comprehensive plan that had the backbone of the infrastructure of the network in place.
I would equate it to kind of a wild, wild west because every school was different. Everybody did things their own way.
I was shocked by some of the things I saw. We were very far behind, no control of management, we were in a hole.
Everything and anything to do with technology was very unequated, so we had significant amounts of work.
We had to go out and touch absolutely everything.
We had to go out and touch absolutely everything.
We can't move forward with handheld devices without having that robust infrastructure behind it, which included adding wireless to all of our buildings. We were going to have to do a complete rip and replace of all of our networking across the district.
Brian realized I didn't have the staff to handle this type of a project, so we proposed the art as a turnkey solution.
We were not only looking for just the initial setup and change-up, but we were also looking for a long-term partner. We wanted a vendor that was going to be with us for the next five to 10 years, and we knew CDW would be able to provide that support. CDW together a comprehensive plan for us, it was approved by the board in June 2011, and we've been moving forward ever since.
We're in the upstairs data center. This is all brand-new, most all this equipment was brought in as part of this network upgrade.
I feel like I got the red carpet treatment. In our project manager, I didn't feel like I had nothing to worry about, and that's what I needed, because I still needed to do our day-to-day operations.
The most notable change is probably just the speed and the access. We can do so much more, so much more efficiently, have it centralized.
Right now, we'll allow anything. Anything that can get access can be on the Wi-Fi. We have some real forgers out there who are incorporating this and doing great things.
I would describe our network now as an educational game changer. I can't imagine teaching nowadays without having a wireless network. It truly makes a difference how students and faculty can access information.
It's very common for students to use their mobile devices for school activities. The computers and the tablets that we're learning to use now is stuff that we're going to use in college as well as in the real world.
I have some kids that I'm working with this year who are extremely shy, wouldn't talk, but then as soon as I put that device in front of them and had them go in online, within two days, I had a completely different kid. If they're not engaged, they're not going to be getting the knowledge out of whatever lesson that they're doing. They're not going to have those skills, they're going to miss out on opportunities.
It is very gratifying to know that we made such a huge difference in a very short period of time.
I'm going to jump in there, while Rod's switching back. One, one of the other reasons that he didn't mention was, CDW, who was our vendor that we hired to do this work for us, they were so impressed with what we were attempting to do, and it was unique, because we were changing everything on a dime, and that is rare. Some, it takes many districts three to five years to do what we did in about six to eight months. So, and that's why that dip was there. So, I mean, it was, you know, there was significant challenges, and that's why they chose us as a future district, because we were doing something unique. And we're going to be able to shoot a video, write a story, you know, to follow up to, you know, other customers, and obviously that was the purpose here, so I just wanted to share that as well. Next part then is, again, what are we focusing on now? One of my goals this year that Brian had was to make sure that I go out and continue to work with the buildings, talk with their leadership teams about what it is they're looking for, what it is that they need in their buildings. I, I do, it's, I know Mr. Roman went out and talked to a couple of the buildings also, and when I sit back and from my lens see it, I have three different stories to tell, one of the elementary, one of the middle, and one of the high school. One that is now in their second year of all-new stuff and learning to use it, and change is a little bit further away from them, other than the change that affected everybody. The middle schools, whose change was this year and are still getting used to the new PCs and Windows 7 environment, and then the high schools, who wanted to go first. It's the easiest way to say it. You know, for the elementary findings, a lot of these, it, it, it seems like small things, but it's not small things to them, but to a perspective, you know, when I went in there, I thought, you never know what you're, what you're, what, what they're going to say and what frustrates them. And the top three things were the things I heard from most of the buildings right away. They were sad that we took a keyboarding program away from them, mainly that was because we were illegally licensed using an illegal copy of keyboarding and had made the plans to buy a new one, so we couldn't install it. We had found some alternatives, they didn't like that. They liked Easy Grade Pro, which was the old gradebook solution, the one in Synergy is a little more high-end use, not really suitable for the elementary. What would they do? Not with the new report card and stuff, that's something that else is being worked on, but that was still something where they're like, that's gone from us. Desktop icons and shortcuts was something we were trying to get away from. We used to have to go and touch every machine, put every little program and everything and make it nice for them. When that went away, we didn't hear about it a lot, but this was the first time where they all kind of told me we'd really like to have that back, and that's something small that we can control from our area, it's just we didn't know. No one ever really came and said, we would just love to have the shortcuts back. Well, we can work on something like that. And printing from the laptops, this, I mean, again, something I heard from, we knew that going out, the elementaries were not a print server centralized printing when we did it two years ago, the middle school started this year. That was a monumental task to try to install the printers on all of them, but to hear that from them all, we'd love to be able to do that, when we knew that they would be doing those for online testing, fast map, didn't really think that they wouldn't be able to print, they could save them from somewhere else. It was to us, I walked away going, these are small things. Now, they're not small things to them, they were frustrations to them, but to us, those were things that we could change. Time of communication was repairs was something we heard from them, and, and that being the same thing, meaning how long it took to give repairs, and the communication about those repairs. You'll hear bad communication at another point, but meaning something different, but that's what they would like, you know, when something's going to be fixed, because again, 53 hours, sometimes they want to know. So our team worked on making sure that we respond on our help test more, try to tell them when you're going to be in the building, again, with guys covering seven buildings, just that communication improved that they were like, okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. One big thing, and I believe Mr. Roman commented on this too, is the onsite, onsite tech aid was missed. That was something that I, you know, was done years ago, and I, they, they're still just having that one go-to person in their building. My, I don't have a person in every building, so that's something. And professional development, just an overall professional development on everything that they use. Eric, who's in the audience here with me, that the phrase of the 80/20 that we use, the programs that we use, we probably use 20% of what's available. And there's 80% more we could be teaching them, but we don't have the time or the, you know, they want to go to that extra step, that, and that's what the professional development's on. It's not like the stuff is sitting and not being used, it's just there are probably so much more they could be doing with it in the classroom to integrate it a little bit more. And, you know, a perfect point is the document cameras or the LMOs devices, they've become colorful overheads for a lot of teachers who just, all it does is transfer the paper. Very few are actually using what a document camera can do by recording and taking video and then uploading it to their website. There's that 80% more that really makes it a very interactive, anytime, anywhere learning later on, that we need to help them get to, because it is, it's a technology they need to learn, so. In the middle school, time for repairs, again, that's a theme, theirs is along the same lines that they just wish it didn't take so long, but their communication was they were looking for more of a direct line communication to other types of changes, or trying to find some type of a funnel, communication back and forth, more of a, more current or in-time communication, whether I go and see them more often throughout the year to get that communication back and forth. So that's something that's, can easily be fixed now that I know that that's something they want. Available technologies to staff, talking about the things in the classrooms, from projectors in every classroom to smartboards, they feel that they don't have it all, they are not, their PTAs are not as involved as in elementary, where a lot of those extra devices, again, have not been yet purchased at the district level, so they feel that they, students come with some things and the high schools have that, the middle schools don't really have that extra funding source that can really supply some of those extra pieces. There really shouldn't be extra pieces, they should be in their rooms. Along those same line computer numbers in Park, they are worried about how they're going to do their assessing. I'll talk about Park more later, and again, professional development. The high schools, the top one, it's kind of my cop-out to have to list the 20 things that they're probably frustrated about, but the refresh is really needed, and it'll address many of their concerns, a lot of their things. Their computers were four years old in, in their fourth year. They had admin access on them, so we probably have actually 700 different styles and types of computers out there. They have computer browsers that have 19 extra toolbars on them that slow down the internet even more than what the internet would be slow. They have, there's a lot of just various different issues out there that I really think we've standardized at the elementary and the middle school level. We never even attempted at the high school, knowing those machines would be going away, that next year's refresh or the, or this summer's refresh will really fix a lot of what really frustrates them when it comes to the equipment that they're using. The actual specs of the machines are not that much different, it's going from that Windows XP environment to that Windows 7 that we can control, maintain, and standardize. We've been working a lot in the last few months, working with their imaging and what software and stuff they need on, just had a meeting with both of them, both the schools this week, their department chairs, to make sure we have exact counts ready, which machines are going where, what's, which type of an image is going to have. The elementaries, there's one image. At the middle school, there's four images, one for each middle school. At the high schools, each, there's about 20 images at each high school, because their science rooms need the science image. So, we're pretty confident we have that pretty laid out and ready to go, that it should be a very smooth transition, and we want to have that done by August 1st for them. And I think that will address a lot of their angst. It's, when we read the tickets that come in, it's, it's, it's not a user issue, it's not a internet issue, it's not a network issue, that's always their first, things are just slow. It's actually that PC, it's, there's just no way to make that stuff work the way they want it to or the way it should be working. They've also requested to have more staff in the building, that's, we're trying to work on some things that could possibly, using some students in those places for those quick checks on, is everything cabled correctly, is everything plugged in correctly, some of those real quick things. But with only one tech in each of the high schools, they're, they're low on, on how much support they have. Staff devices, classroom technologies, again, a concern of theirs, to be able to have devices that are theirs that go with them from room to room, and also to have more smartboards and things like that in the buildings. Synergy was their biggest concern, I, I think the last meeting we had with them, when they really, it was a big change from what they were used to doing with the, I forget the name of the companies.
Edgepoint? Sims?
No, that's Sims, the one that was online, got to help me here.
Edline.
Edline, thank you. It was Ed, it was Ed something. Yeah, from Edline that, you know, was, was something that they had been so used to, and, and again, it was changed, but Synergy was supposed to make things easier, and, and it really didn't. I'll, I'll go a little bit more into Synergy there, but that was a big concern, that we heard about a lot of the other stuff, and, and the Synergy was the real big one, and we're still addressing that one now. It's, again, used daily, almost every period at the high school level, that they use it a lot more, they have a little bit more frustrations with it. And again, they also would like more professional development. So, leading right into the Synergy, the, the pros of Synergy, and there are some. The parent view, I think, is the biggest pro that we see right now, it's, it's that connection where in Edline they had to have, they had to share their student account to see everything that was in Edline. Parent view, we did online registration prior to going live using Synergy. Parents can do attendance online, that's one nice thing that they've never been able to do before. There is the ability to do discipline, health, course history, anything else that deals with the student. We've not turned that on, that's not, we don't need them knowing every time they're referred to an, you know, but there are some, you know, various top-of-line systems we can do with that, or top-level things we can do with the system. Gradebook and Synergy within the same database. This is where Edline came in, they used to be able to record their grades, and teachers always had that next step to go and actually report it for the parents to see. Now, when they just record a grade, it's automatically ready as long as they hit the checkbox, you know, again, trying to make it easier for the teachers. And in a nice way, that was actually one of the more frustrations, is they were used to having that little window of, let's not boast until this, you know, and it's a learning curve, I mean, it really was. They were like, I didn't want all those to show, because I'd only graded half, and half the kids got a zero, and why'd they get a zero? Because I hadn't submitted, you know, so it was part of that learning how the program worked in the beginning, but I can imagine, you know, when you have 80% of your parents who didn't get the grades, you only graded 20%, and they all got F right away, it was, you know, frustrating, and that was a learning curve for all of us. The ability to eliminate printing paper report cards is, is one benefit of having this. We've been doing, I believe we've been doing, they're not doing it this semester, is that correct, for the high schools? They're not doing it this, with progress reports and stuff, they're now just sending out a connected call and saying, log on if you can't have your student printer and bring it home from school. I, the time I spent in the buildings, I don't, I think the first thing I see every kid do when they log in, when I'm in the libraries or whatever, is they go straight to their student view. They want to see what assignment's going to be today, they want to see what they got on their last grade. It is, one of the most trafficked logins is back and forth between Synergy. Another big thing was the high school and the middle school scheduling was done in Synergy within its first four months last year. Not the complete scheduling, but a big part of it that was, putting that before even fully using Synergy was a big step for us to get all of that data and everything in there. The cons and where we're at in current, current status, and the implementation fiasco, I think that's the easiest way to, to, to talk about what happened. When Synergy came on board, there was a, they hired a middle company to do the implementation with us, do all of our data transfer, to work with us on training, to set up training all the staff and all of the building on how to do things, how to set it up, how to set up gradebooks, how to really do everything. That was the, the person who was to train us in, in Synergy. The middle of the fall, when things started getting a little frustrated, and Laura Morris, who was not a Synergy expert or trained in how to use it, you know, all completely, you know, at our end going, okay, there's some things here we can't even answer. We finally were able to get Edgepoint, the actual parent company, involved. In a few short weeks after Edgepoint came out and visited with us and mostly the high school staff and administrators who were here, their middle company was fired. We didn't find out until a month later that they were fired, but because we, they had led us and taught us to do things incorrectly. So we're still trying to clean up a lot of that, which leads us into our current status now. So as they taught us how to set up high school gradebooks and said, do it this way, we should have done it differently. Now, we made some changes in the second semester, and we're even making some changes in standardizing it a little bit more at the high school level to start next year, but we should have done that from the beginning, but we didn't know it was another company telling us to do it this way. So this Widenhammer company was cut out of the middle. We've been in contact with Edgepoint, we almost contacted them. Weekly still, as we're still trying to clean up some of the data errors that came over from the old SIM system, clean up some of the setup systems and how we set up gradebooks and, and staff access and things like that. We're learning as we go through it, but it, it was, the easiest thing to call is a fiasco. It's, Edgepoint, I want to say is trying to do its best, it's, it's brought on a lot of big companies, and I hate to say it, we're a small fish compared to some of the other big states they've brought on, entire states are going to Synergy. They just brought on Wyoming, we're fighting for their support, and they've been very honest when they talked with Brian and said, we're short-staffed, we're trying to get more people, we know how important you are, but it's, I'll be happy when this year's over and we can hopefully start a year off next year in a system that started off the right way without all the frustrations going through. So that's kind of where our current status is, fixing the poor implementation. Again, we're working with Edgepoint, we still do have a few critical things with them, some data that's out there are the real big things we're working with, how they handle some of the state reporting of attendance and stuff, which can affect finance, we have to make sure we get those correct, and can't trust them to say, yeah, it's all right. So, we're doing our due diligence to make sure that's right. The other big thing is professional development. Now that, you know, a lot of the professional development was done pre-people coming in, and we really have to revisit it and kind of train people differently. The high schools have been great, they have a few, you know, pioneers who've really picked it up and have been able to make themselves available in the school libraries and are, you know, helping ease the pain, I guess. You know, we're a small department with only Laura who really knows how to do all of that aspects of it, so we're playing catch-up, but it's getting better. We don't, I think we see the light at the end of the tunnel with that one also. Any questions on the Synergy? I know that's a, it's almost a bad word, I kind of laugh because some company is just starting a soccer thing and they call themselves Synergy, I'm like, you're reading, really? I should have read the paper first. Yes?
When you talked about the 20 images for the high school, is that 24? I mean, okay, is the science image at North going to be the same as a science image at South, or is that, so that's all standard?
Yes, for most of the curricular courses, yes, but there are some, let's call them favorite programs, screen recording programs that they might use, you might have a preference, just like, you know, you could have a preference over which browser you use on the internet. So they do have some little tweaks, but for the most part, yeah, they all have their, you know, AP, whatever's curricular-based, but some of them would rather have, I'm trying to think of the screen recorders now. One would rather have Jing on the North end because they were used to the Jing, which is just a program for capturing the screen when the teacher's trying to record what they're doing. On the South side, they use something different. So we're giving them those accommodations to say, well, because we don't want them to say, "Well, you already have a screen recorder, use this one." Because then it's, again, we're the bad people. So we literally sent out and they gave us a list of an astronomical amount and we're like, there's about nine video programs going in in different places, but if one of them wants to use 3D VIX and the other one wants to use this, they're used to it, they know how to use it, you know? So we're making the customizations so that... And it's easier for us is we just take a list and say, "This whole wing gets this image" and we hit a couple of checkboxes and it puts the right stuff in. Again, because of the case system, we're not sitting down doing it differently. We just... They had to sign off on, yes, this room gets this image, this room gets this image. And the implementator, the company that comes in for us, E-Bright, does that, we hand them the list and they're actually doing it and signing off saying, "This room got this image, this room got this image." The imaging station can hold up to 100 images, so it's not... It's just building them all. That was the long part, but yeah, it's... Curricularly, they're all the same. PARK. I actually had to write PARK what it meant up there because I can't remember what it means. It is the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers. We've all heard PARK. This is what I know about PARK and this isn't supposed to be a presentation on PARK but I'm just talking about because there are a lot of demands on the technology side for what PARK is. PARK is, as you know, going to replace ISAT. It's PSAE, everything else in two years and make us go all online. It is an ELA annually in grades three through 11. ISAT right now is in only in...
Three, four, five.
Three, four, five. Three through eight. So we're adding some more grade levels. Mathematics is annually in grades three through eight and annually at the high school math courses, if you're in those three courses, as of right now. Other things that we know, and I didn't put it on here right now, they're saying the average per student could be nine hours a year of testing, when right now ISAT doesn't take a kid nine hours. I mean, so to make accommodations for all this. PARK has two assessments that they're looking at. One is the performance base, which is done at three-fourths of the year, and the other one is done when 90% of it is done, which is the end-of-year assessment component. That's about all we know about that now. So there are two testing windows, but right now they're saying that schools will have up to 20 days for testing windows. Again, to test every kid in a grade level for nine hours, you probably need 20 testing windows. Again, very sketchy information, but just to let you know, when we talk about how the amount of assessment assessing is going to be going up, this would fall under the unfunded mandate list we were looking at a long time ago. So what does that mean for us? Right now, they're telling us at PARK, and I... You have these as larger images on your... Just so I don't want to... I didn't want to go through them all. They're saying to recommend it will be one device for every kid at the largest grade level in the testing. So at Bauer, I don't know what it is, third, fourth, or fifth, that's their largest grade level against that. Because our report we got projected for 2014, 15-year, so they would need 82 devices. If we were to look across, right now they have 110. So they're red, they're ready. They technically would be ready because they have 80 laptops and the 30 desktops for testing. The other schools, again, you can see down, would need to buy some more. We have two years of purchasing. We have this summer coming up, which again, part of the long-term plan was always to add cards every year anyways. At the end of this year's purchase, which is, I'll talk about in a little bit, we would need three by next summer to have everybody at the minimum. We'd probably still be buying one card for every school as it had planned. We'd always talked about doing that, one for every six classrooms to get us to a standard so that there were enough for drop-ins and things. So elementary, when we talk about devices needed, we're going to probably be there. We'll be able to handle PARK at the elementary level with our current plan already in the works. Now, I don't have a staff member in every one of those buildings to help out during testing, but middle school then was a little different. At the end of this summer, we will still need 30 more cards, spread about evenly across the schools to get them all to where we could technically handle PARK with our own devices. So that's probably doable if we think we've been buying 30 cards this year, you know, and for the budget for next year is another 30 and then depending on what we get, the elementary, it's probably doable, but we're going to have to increase even a little bit more, but it's not that far out of reach. The high school one then is not too far away from the middle schools, a total of 40, but that's 20 more cards in the building. Where I struggle is who's... What's happening to those cards when we're not testing? 20 cards would fill up this room. I don't know where those store 20 cards. I don't know how to lock up 20 cards. I don't know how they'll switch them every five minutes during passing periods if they wanted to use them during the day. Yes, we all want to go one-on-one, but there's a bigger issue with not only acquiring those but keeping them, updating them, making sure they're working correctly and being able to have them in a testing situation. So one of the things that was brought to the Luda group in February was, it's a company aid... Oh, I forgot the name of it. It's not important. Up in Schaumburg, I met with a guy this week to just talk about what they're looking at doing. They're actually buying up all of these old laptops from school districts as they get rid of them and they're turning them into PARK assessment things and looking at leasing them during the PARK windows where they come in and they maintain them. They set them up. They're actually bringing in their own Wi-Fi. And again, at the middles and the high schools, we've already decided to go to a gig Internet, but during the PARK assessment, we would still almost have to tell everyone else during regular classrooms, "You need to be off because testing is more important." So what this solution is looking at doing, and something, again, we're a year away from doing this, it's at the very infancy stages, is they would actually bring in a cloud-based Motorola Internet and set it up in certain areas of the building, bring in the own devices so that the school itself could operate on our current network as-is, possibly at the high school level where we'd buy, rent the devices. Again, we could probably supply the devices at the middle school level a year from now with the right planning, but we'd probably still want to rent the cloud Wi-Fi for a two or three-week period for Motorola so that our regular classrooms could continue to operate and do what they do. Too many of them are based in computer labs that you can't say you all have to be off the computer while we test because it would, again, we're talking two, possibly 20-week windows, the classrooms that teach would stop. So we're not the only district having to face this. It's a... Luckily, I was the second guy, second person to call this guy and he can only handle four districts. So we're already on the list if we decide to do this, but it's one of those, you know, more for information, you're going to be hearing a lot about it next year, but in our current plan, we probably would have been able to cover for the elementary and probably needed just a little small bump up for what to meet at the middle school, but the high school is, it'd be tough. It'd be tough to do, and not just financially, it would be tough to do without a lot of extra staff and a lot of extra support in the buildings 24 hours a day for moving all of those machines around. And again, if we were ever to go to a one-on-one environment, it's a different story, but that's right now where we sit with PARK. Any questions about that? Do you want to add anything, Brian?
I would just remind board members, you know, this is, the state is requiring us moving to this online assessment that they projected and what's got, you know, all IT directors and every school district in the state has significant concerns about this and also, you know, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum. You know, Faith has talked about that before, you know? And, you know, she had mentioned that this is on the horizon and we, not only do we have to plan academically, we have to plan, you know, from a technology standpoint. So we've got to find some solutions here, you know, and try to work forward. So that's all to say at this point, although we're on it, we're thinking about it, we're starting to plan and we will probably be bringing some solution recommendations forward on how we're going to meet this expectation. Rod made a key point here, it's unfunded mandate, okay? And I can tell you, that has been a clear message that we've been sending not only to the Illinois State Board of Education, but also, you know, everybody, you know, listen. You know, you can't push these things on us with, and keep taking away the... You know the story, the funding, and expect us to continue to, you know, have, figure out ways to manage it. It's a huge challenge that's in front of us. So we'll talk more. Rod's going to go on and talk a little bit about the big picture. We'll come back to this if there's any questions.
Yeah, so... So that's, you know, kind of what we're dealing with now, looking at the PARK stuff and trying to make, you know, all three levels happy, you know, really addressing what their concerns are and everything. So where are we headed? No one's ever seen this slide before. This is kind of my internal working thing, but I thought I would share it just because there have been changes to it. This is the original three-year, what was going to happen in the three-year plan is the red stuff on the top. I've underlined things that are changes. You already approved an increase in Internet and WAN. We always were going to do an evaluation every year as we were kind of in that doubling, doubling, doubling method or method. The other thing up there is we're going to cross off Genesee and just because of the issues with synergy, special ed, we're not sure now. Something else about state, I think, is mandating something else now, you know, who knows what's going to change with that, but we're looking to add a piece, it's called the RT development, so there's no monetary save. That does give us a little bit more backend into synergy to fix some of the stuff ourself without having to wait for them. It's a coding program that allows us to manipulate their software because you really can't call Microsoft and say, "Make Word do this." This RT development allows us to make synergy do what we want by changing its software. And then the black stuff is all, the black comments on there at the bottom are new things that have come up. Again, a five-year plan, we knew it was going to be changing, but these are things that everyone is wanting now. Adding network monitoring and security, again, another level of it, the two products we put in place have done a lot, but people are asking us for, you know, how can we check the speed in every corner of every building? Is that still working and things? So some monitoring tools, not huge monetary figures, but some more things that, again, take away some time from people who have to now monitor this also as well. It's more of a adding work to us. We're looking at even changing a little bit of our organization and adding some servers back to the high schools so that they can sustain survivability if anything were to ever really happen here. Luckily, we have not had that other than that one outage right before spring break, but to where they would be backups of each other and us and Hubble will continue to do what we're doing for the rest of the district. It'll speed up some of the connection speeds. Google is becoming a big question mark out there and a big push that, you know, it's not every district's doing it, let's do it. We're getting a lot of teachers who want to use it. We can't go global with this, too much change again that would just probably spiral out of control, so we're looking at doing some piloting things and having a staff member next year really kind of manage that in small pockets. We're already doing it somewhat in the middle schools and some of those new elective courses where they have Google accounts and they're working with, you know, sharing things in the cloud and collaborating is going well, so teachers want to jump on board, but we're not going to hand it off and say, "Everyone, here's your Google account and we're going to move to the Google," and that's a two- or three-year project that hopefully people will look at. We are looking at redoing the server room that's upstairs here. Perfect timing with the flood. For those of you that went down there, you notice most of the servers are, it still looks like there's a lot there. The racks are still there, most of the servers are upstairs now. This new work will move some walls in the first floor up here and bring the rest of those upstairs, get the proper AC, and look at doing a full backup of the building for power. That's the one thing right now I can't. If power goes out, we're done. And we are, the generator we have in this building can support the Internet and a few other ancillary things, but not the whole system. And that's, the trees around here, it's not fair to one of the high schools if we go down that they, you know, would not be able to continue to operate. Luckily, not kind of. Well, this year we haven't had any major power outages, but that'll give us full sustainability for 100% uptime guarantee. And then the other big thing is the mobile device management. This year we added through Title I about 120 iPads. All schools had about, there was probably another 150 to 200 out there to begin with. That is becoming, again, Apple wants those to be individual devices, but schools want to still treat them as, "I want the same apps on all five," and all of this becomes a management nightmare when you know how easy it is for kids to move them wherever they want to. So we're now looking at moving, shifting one of the roles, one of my guys who's been working with this is to work that mobile device management so that as they bring in, and we in South now, they're using some regular Windows 8 tablets that we have that we can, I don't want to say lock them down, I don't like that word, but make them so that the teachers aren't spending every Friday moving everything back the way they wanted so Monday they can use it again, you know, so that we can control some of those app purchases. If you know anything about Apple, for every device needs its own Apple ID. I mean, and you have to know the Apple ID, so if you're on the one and it's not the right Apple, you know, you need to know the password to that one to add an app. This program allows us to do that and put it in the hands of the school to manage their own 20 or 30 iPads and so, again, wasn't an issue two years ago, now it's a big one.
Corey Connor.
Right, if he gets his way, we're going to have to have 30 of those. The other big thing is the vision building and we, a lot of talk was about the SEL design team. We do have a technology design team. It was originally started really to help with the communication and helping us as a department work with communicating out when we do changes. When we make profile changes, how should we communicate it out? They're the ones that told us to put PDFs on everybody's computer screen. They're the ones that say, "Email this many times, email the people directly," you know, so that, not everybody reads every email anyways, but if we, you know, do these 10 things, we should reach at least 90% of the people that this will affect. We're kind of at the, again, I'm going to go back to that milestone moment to where right now the hardware and the systems are in place. Our changes are really small now, they're minuscule, they're not like global affecting that tomorrow everyone's going to have to, you know, it's not going to have a start menu or something. It's all very different. So we're really looking to turn it now to this design team. We're going to add some more members to it, add some curriculum members to it and really have this group try to take this and build this long-term plan now of, for a couple of years, we've been driving it, putting the systems in place, now to have them drive it and then come back to the tech team and say, "Here's what we need." Right now, we've just kind of been going off, this is what we know we need to get everything to a usable place, so to really have more of the curriculum drive, what types of devices are going to be purchasing that, to answer those questions, yes. We did sit down with the design team one time this year, why we're not going iPads. Was talked about with the staff devices is the design team itself thought, we know laptops can do everything we need them to do now. iPads can do a lot, this Windows 8 could do a lot, you'd have more PD and they kind of said, "In this first year, if we're buying, stick with the laptops." But that group made that decision. That wasn't a Rod Mack decision, that wasn't a, you know, we're going, we don't like iPads, it was, we're ready for, we know this, we're ready for this, we need to work on that. That's where the mobile device management piece comes in. So this design team, we, in our last meeting this year, we shared with them that we're going to be adding some more people. We're going to be starting in the fall for them to really kind of work out a plan to put in place in spring to really work, to bring in community staff, parents, board, I didn't, sorry to put that on there, you know, to have a board member on that design team to really say, you know, by the end of next school year then, we really have that long-term plan. We want this many devices, classrooms need to have this in a projection and we don't have something like that written yet to really look at what is needed out there and what is that long-term goal and how can we get everybody on that level playing field.
Did I say that right?
The next thing is then our summer work, just to share what we're doing. We do have the high school refresh and desktop, district laptops. Again, we're looking at, right now the numbers are still rough, probably about another 800 laptops again when we talk about adding the cards out there. Two cards at the middle and high school, one card at every elementary, and then some other refresh ones that we need to replace that are just too old. Our server reconfigurations, I talked about building them up at the high schools, those MDF, which is again, just the main file server room. And it really is, it's part of facilities work too, because I don't knock down walls, you know, but to expand that room. The WAN, which is again, the wide area network and the Internet upgrade, we informed you about at the last board meeting. And then the website upgrade, which I can finally take a break and turn it over.
Thank you, Rod. Okay, so after some, the company that we use to manage our website is called School Wires and for the past probably year or so now, School Wires has been begging us to please upgrade the back end of our website to help improve the functionality of it. And so the back end, what I mean by that is, so when I go in and edit the website, I edit it in something called a site manager and that site manager is what needs to be upgraded. We are one of the last school districts that they work with to do that and we've been holding it off because it is...
I said no.
And because I went on maternity leave, to be honest.
And I said no. Too many changes.
That's right.
So we really need to update that, upgrade that back end. So we really need to update that, upgrade that backend. So when I say upgrade, why? If you tried to jump on the website from an iPad or from your phone, you know that there's some challenges and you can't see a lot of parts of our website because of that. Part of that is because we need to upgrade. And so we thought that if we were going to have to upgrade, we have heard some feedback from a lot of our administrators, our schools, our parents, our teachers, that there are some aspects of the design of our website that hinder communication with our community, with our parents. And so we thought, we're going to have to go in here and upgrade the backend of our website and train teachers on how to update their website, train administrators how to maintain the new backend. Why not update the design at the same time? And so that's what we're going to do. So when, the new website, we'll kind of work backwards. The new website tendatively will go live on October 1st. One of the criticisms we've heard from staff feedback is, don't go live on something right after we're getting back from a break or at the beginning of something. We have enough stuff going on, let's, can you, can you kind of hold off on that? So that's why we picked October. It's close to the beginning of the school year, but not right at the beginning. And also October, the beginning of October will actually mark three years that we have, since we've redesigned our website. So then, kind of, what will happen starting now, between May and June, we will work with different groups of stakeholder engagement, gather feedback for developing a new design of our website. In July is when we'll work with School Wires to actually implement a customized design that is unique to our school district. And then in August through December, we will conduct as much training as possible and as needed with all of our staff. And I'll go into that in just a minute. So what? Okay. So some initial features, the new web design will include responsive web design, hang on a second. The website will be viewable from any device and that it will also have a mobile application. So we're looking at two different websites right now that we're going to sort of model ours off of. And Andy just jumped on right now to the mobile app from Barrington. So the first one is the Delmar School, Unit School District. Delmar's out in California. Lovely if we were sitting on the beach right now.
Well, we've got water in all of our pictures.
We've got some of those. So this is the Delmar Union School District. Rod, if you can just scroll down a little bit so they can see some of the different layout aspects of it. It's a lot, a lot of the newer web designs are going to something that's a lot cleaner, very simple. But the cool thing about this website is, one is that Flash is not embedded, they no longer use Flash to, when they're taking that into account for their design. So all these pictures will be viewable on, at different devices. So, which is one of the issues right now that we're having. But the other thing about this is that no matter how you move the screen around, you can still access all of the information on the page. Is that, do you see how that works? Okay. And then the other school, the other school district's website that we're looking at is Barrington 220. Yes, if you want to scroll down, she can see the layout. It really highlights, it's got some bigger icons on there so that things don't get buried on the page. So you can easily access the important things that you want for both parents, staff alike and community in general. So this is another website that we're looking at. If you click on the other tab, Rod, the other aspect that we will have is a mobile app. So we brought it up on the, on the screen just so that you can see it, but Andy actually pulled it up on his, on his iPhone. But if you were to go to Barrington 220's website from your iPhone, this is what it would look like. So it's, it's, you know, information only, but it's easy to use, it's clean, you can get the basics of what you need rather than having to, you know, right now, if you were to go to our website from your phone, you're like squinting to see and, you know, you have to, you know, expand the information. So it's much more user-friendly, especially for someone who is, especially for those people who are using mobile devices. This is much more convenient for them and they can access information. And that, they have also assured us that we will, with the upgrade, it will limit a lot of the browser issues that we have. So, you know, if you were to go on our website using Internet Explorer, Firefox, or Safari, they look a little bit different on each one. And so with the upgrade in this new web design, they've assured us that they will make sure that our website's compatible with the latest three versions of all three, all of the main So when I mentioned stakeholder engagement, these are just some of the groups that I'm going to work with between May and June. I'm also going to be meeting with the high school principal, I'm sorry, high school principals actually tomorrow, and then middle school and elementary school principals at the different level meetings to see who else we need to add to this list. And also going over the entire plan with them to see, you know, if it needs to, we need to tweak anything and get their feedback on it. But these are just some of the different departments we'll work with. To find out what it is, what would you like to see out of a website? What would make your life easier in communicating what you need to, to the community, to your parents, to your students, to your staff?
Our students want your stakeholder groups on there?
They're not on my list, but I will add them. I'm sorry, I'm still getting over, so I apologize for my voice.
Principals are right.
The other group I was thinking of, you know, if we think about access to our website by people who don't have children in school, I'm wondering if we should try to get some input, you know, from, from, from that group as well. Because, you know, especially when we were, you know, talking about the referendum, the election, whatever, you know, it might be, we might want to try to reach that group and, and see if they have any input or if they would like some input on, into this process. Because I think, you know, less and less is getting communicated through print media, even though you do a fabulous job with, you know, our focus on learning and all of that. I think probably if people could have a question and they could go to our website and find an answer easily, you know, that might help with some of the messages that we're...
This is a working list, so any inputs helpful because we know we have, it is our number one main communication resource. We know it, it's huge. And we have to stay out in front of us. Any feedback like that's great.
And then finally, training. Between August through December, and I'm sure continuing after December, we'll conduct as many trainings as necessary through webinar trainings that are led by School Wires. So we're going, we're planning on doing some Train the Trainer webinars. So each, each building has its own kind of site director that's the expert in website management. So we will do some Train the Trainers with them, but then also webinar trainings for staff so that they can participate in a training from their own seat. They don't have to make time in their schedule to come to something, a group training either at their school or here at the SSC. And then we'll also do traditional group trainings that are led by our staff and then one-on-one trainings as necessary. Does anyone have any questions about the website before Rod goes on? Okay.
Thanks, Erica. The last part of these slides are just, what do we need to do to get, to get to the, the end of our five-year journey? And I mean, really, it needs to be a revolving, we need to start looking at year six and year seven and, you know, just kind of having a revolving five-year plan. One nice thing that comes out of Luda is working with comparative districts. This next graph is a group of Luda districts who submitted this information. A few of us have, they have used it at times. I know they're really small, I know they're pasty, so I try to make it a big page, but I just want, I actually have charge of all these, so we don't need to read this thing. But the one thing that I do want to point out, we're at the end here is, is the 1.385, just so you can actually see what that number is compared to the rest. You'll see a lot of others that, you know, up closer to the 2% when we talk about the percentage of funds for technology out of the district budget. The big thing with this one is that's, we're at 1.385 after doubling the tech budget. The rest of these districts are all still at the end of where they made cuts, they cut in tech. You know, they're, they went down and they're still well ahead of us from, from the overall funding in technology. Here's just a chart to show that. I do laugh, the, the Batavia Tech Director was the one who gave me the final things and he got mad because I wish I had to share this with you because before you added your stuff to the list, I was the lowest. Again, and they're half our size. I mean, it's, you know, it's a different thing. But the next couple of things are just quick charts just to show you, and this is based on the average. Right now, it's, I just have the instructional staff based on the average. The average of other Luda districts have four instructional. We really have zero. We have maybe one person with that title in the district who works, Karen Sad, who works at North, but really not district, she works at, at North only. I know that the other high school's adding one, but I didn't mean to leave that off. I did want to decide that, when I think about what the instructional staff is, you know, who's responsible for helping, you know, implementing and integrating technology. Network technicians, we're at two and a half, really it's two. I've got one who kind of, he's really a tech who helps out with them, but I was just trying to be honest. The other districts average at four. Web and data technicians, we're at two now. Really, that was just one, it was Laura Morris. We just added that one person last year, but lost a tech to add that person. So we lost feet on the ground to add another person to help out with the conversion of synergy and helping out with the data. We really don't do web, but the other districts call that, they have a web person also because our website is managed by 2,000 employees, not, well, you can manage it. I just don't count her. It's not her full-time job. And then when we look at PC techs, again, the average is eight and we have five and a half PC techs. So again, against the average. So there, you kind of want to be the longer, not the shorter. In this graph, you want to be the shorter, not the longer, which is how much each of our people have to maintain. So when we talk about student and staff per net tech, each one of ours are responsible to maintain 7,200 accounts when the average is closer to 5,000 accounts. And I know a lot of that is a common type of thing, but they have enough people that, you know, when there's changes in the system, those extra 2,200 people really make changing anything to an account a lot, a lot bigger deal when you have that much more staff. Devices per net, we're at 2,200 that they have to monitor. Other districts are around 1,300 it looks like. Student and staff per tech, if we were to talk about how much we can lend assistance and help them out, we're at, again, over 4,300, the rest of them are closer to 3,000. And when we talk about devices per tech, this is actually only including computers. We also have to touch every printer and everything else. I don't believe the other districts put that either, but we're at 1,000 each one. And that's actually not accurate because two of our five and a half techs sit at the high schools. So the other three and a half cover the rest of the district where there's a lot more equipment. We've added 1,800 pieces to our thing in the last two years and have gone down a staff in tech, when we talk feet on the ground. So what, what is the budget impact of, of what we're looking to do, you know, to stay on par for that, you know, where the 0.2% increase that was present a long time ago is this year will be an increase of about 800,000, which will take us to about 1.86% for, again, I'm now using the RMA figures, we now, the main reason this increase is needed this year, instead of staying back at the, with about the $2 million amount, mobile device, cart, staff devices, that was always in the plan to go this year. Network support systems, the main configuration of that server room so we can guarantee 100% uptime. Upgraded software at all levels, a lot of that is going to be spent, some of it at the high schools with their stuff can't go from XP to Windows 7 with some changes in some of their software and then their other refresh and server needs that they have. Any questions on that? Yes?
Okay. So this extra $800,000 has already been put into our, our budget for next year and then carried forward in the five-year projection?
No.
Oh.
Okay. However, you know, this is as we build the budget, as we start to make final changes, you know, we're going to, we would like to try and make this happen. Obviously, it depends on revenues, as you well know, it depends on a whole range of things. You know, this is, to get to where we need to be, this is the recommendation to where we need to go. Now, we may not be able to get there depending on a whole range of things. There'll be some decision points coming up as we finalize the budget and decide where we're headed. You know, we've carved out a significant amount of money up for pension obligation. We don't know yet whether we're going to have that obligation or not next year. You know, there's things like that, you know? And I think some of these decision points, as we finalize our budget over the summertime, are going to have to be decided as, you know, as we move forward. There's some things that are given, that have to happen.
So how much of this is in there right now? Any of it? How much is in there right?
In what I handed in, I mean, I handed in to cover this.
But not fully so.
Not in the projections that you saw back in February. Right now, staff are turning in their budgets, okay? I mean, so...
I asked for it.
That's right. Whether he's going to get it or not hasn't been seen yet, you know? But, but the point is with, you know, for the board's perspective, we're going to try to make this happen. You know, so when you get, you know, when we get into drafts of the budget moving forward, you know, we're going to try our best to make this happen. We can only do it with revenues as, as they become available. So there's a lot of factors involved here. We're going to try to make this happen. We may, we may not. There's a lot of decision points along the way. So is that fair bill? I mean, that's where we're at. You know, everybody's submitted, so now, now we got to make it all fit with what we have. And so it is about decisions, it's about priorities, you know? Where is, you know, this is one of those decision points on what's critical and, and, you know, what, you know, a lot of these things, it's also about expenditures for capital projects, it's expenditures for, you know, some other unknown factors and also our revenues.
Okay. So, so what you're telling me is then for this 13, 14 budget, none of this was in, or, about 2 and a half percent roughly? I mean, when you, when you...
None of the increase, none of the increase. You're right, there was a 2 and a half percent. Didn't you add 2 and a half, Bill? That was the original look at it, that is correct. So the minimum was where it was at last year, plus 2 and a half percent. No more than that was put in the projections. You know, anything that would go beyond that, we have to probably make some other decisions other places if we're going to make some of this happen. Does that make sense?
The other piece then is the staffing impact, which was evident, you know, again, a lot of people commented on it. My recommendations to Brian at this time were to go with one more network technician. Again, we really only have two, to handle all of our, you know, upgraded equipment. Again, we've had CDW still on site who's been able to help us with a lot of this, but someone to come in who has some of that more hardware networking knowledge to help us out and to be able to take the load off so that it's not just two guys who are doing absolutely everything. More feet on the ground for two, an additional two entry-level technicians and then some adjustments from my other staff where, in their current job roles by adding some of these functions. Again, the mobile device management is, when we talk with other districts, some of them have one person doing it full-time. We're probably not at that, but I need to free up someone so that they're not doing so much in tech so that they can have 0.2 of a day, 0.3 of a day and some more high-end functioning. Our desktop management system engineer with, with Case, that, that job has turned into, I didn't realize how large that job was. It is a very high-skilled job. We need to make, you know, accommodations for that. People aren't going to work for those when they know what people in other districts are making for those types of things. Our Google account management, we need to make, we need to make space for that. That can't fall to the network guys, it can't fall to the data guy people, they're too busy already. That also involves a little bit of the integration support. They need to know how to use Google. You can't just say, I made your account. They need to be able and willing to show, to be able to work with teachers on how other schools are using Google, so that piece. Support management, this year I've been doing that. I'm handling the day-to-day and it's, it's a lot. It's, you know, we had that two years ago and I had to shift people around for the voice, we needed a voice person, we needed some other things. Possibly someone in my staff could probably take over some of that responsibilities, but again, we need to make recommendations for that. And then again, integration support is one of our biggest things. We, we don't really have a person doing that right now, working with the curriculum department, making sure that opportunities for integration, opportunities for training and all that are happening.
Again, same thing here. This is a recommendation and through attrition or through, you know, you know, these are some decision points when it comes to staffing. So, you know, we have to decide, you know, and, and make some, you know, targeted decisions where some of these needs are. So if you, you know, obviously, we're going to make it fit in the budget if we add these, we're going, but we may choose not to fill a different position to fill one of these, you know, as, as opportunities become available and present themselves.
And then finally, the last thing is the educational impact. You know, we have a budget impact and a staffing impact, but educational is additional devices. Every, almost all levels wanted more, more things to be able to do what they want to do and not in the teacher's hands and the student's hands. More at, you know, their, their, the carts in one year for the schools that never had laptops have been, can we get more? Because they need to be in more rooms. We found a way to use four or five at a time. More technologies, staff or more device uptime. If we have more staff, they're going to have more uptime. It's not going to be the 53 hours waiting, you know, we would love to, I love looking at that graph at the beginning of the month because it's using a very quick turnaround, but as the month grows, the hour gets longer. I mean, we do it on a month-to-month, some, you know, things take a little bit longer, but we'd really like to have a 24-hour turnaround. We have that about at the high schools, but when I factor everybody else in, it goes to 53 hours. But the high schools do have a dozen, you know, one designated tech. Staff devices for anytime, anywhere access. Again, we have not yet really supplied other than for the special ed department. That was more of a refresh of what special ed already had, is devices for staff. This is our first year, the design team has looked at devices and made recommendations to, you know, have them fill out surveys for who would like them. So we do have a group of, you know, first pioneers who we know are really going to use it with some courses so that we know that they can, you know, it doesn't just become a paperweight they take home because they don't have a computer home, that they're actually going to show us what they're going to do and utilize it within the classroom. I'd love to hand it to every staff, that's just not even in the 800,000, that's not, not there. And then again, the big thing is more time for professional development and new technologies. Without more staff and more devices, we're going to be at that status quo for, you know, a few years to come. And then like everyone else, question?
I think in summary, you know, what we're going to try and do is try to do as much of this as possible, okay? However, and I certainly welcome any feedback from the board, you know, as far as priorities because we will have some decision points. You know, Rod's requesting, how many laptops did you, was it? I mean...
Right now?
Yeah.
800.
Okay. We may not get 800 laptops. We may only be able to do 400, you know, depending on what, you know, our budget looks like. like. But that's where the decision point's going to come in. But there'll be downside to that. You know, we won't be able to make the progress that we would hope to make with the, you know, wireless devices in the classrooms, or get them enhanced of staff as much as we'd like to do. So, that's where some of that decision point comes in. And we're going to have to, you know, try to make some decisions, you know, moving forward.
So, once you find out how much we can afford, you'll, I would imagine, give us a prioritized, you know, I'd rather have two people and 400 laptops, or three people and no laptops. So, that'll all come back to us in terms of, here's, here's the, here's what I would, here's what we can afford, and here's the expectation based on what we can afford, that kind of thing.
When we bring the budget, the first draft of the budget, you know, there's going to be some real key numbers in there on some decision points. Absolutely.
We'll have in May already, we'll have in May already is the, is the high school refresh. That's already in the budget, because that lease will take care of the lease that's moving out. And already incurred, because some other things falling off, we can probably do most of the district laptops. It's the staff ones that were the new addition to this year, you know, because we have other things that fell off that we paid last year, you know what I mean? So, those two will have to, and those are time-sensitive. They have to be done in May, otherwise, we're not going to have them ready in August. That's one of those. So, those two, but those are things that are already, you know, essentially built in. It's the, a lot of the other stuff that kind of is, I can't find a placement to say this fell off, and this is going to fit there. The, but, you know, so you will, we will see stuff on laptops and, and the desktop refresh, but again, those are, you know, they're essentially cost-neutral from what's been happening in the past, yeah.
It is getting late, so I do want to be, I want to be sensitive to that. On the other hand, it's an important subject, because clearly, this is a big need in our district. I guess my question to you process-wise is that we, you're talking a lot about decision points that need to be made. And the budget, when it comes to us, will there be an opportunity to perhaps hear a little something about the priorities of the decision points? And I'm not talking about just in technology, whether it's laptops or mobiles. I'm talking about, you know, we've got this much money, and we've decided to spend, allocate this for technology and this for professional development of some other, let's say, social emotional learning. That, you know, because I'm talking about the bigger picture that the board should look at as to how our budget reflects our priorities, as opposed to specifics on laptops and all of that. That comes later.
Absolutely. I mean, what I, what I anticipate us doing is bringing, you know, some decision, some key aspects. There are some givens. We know we're going to staff at a certain level. We know, you know, there's certain pieces of this we're going to do, we have to do. But there are going to be some decision points, okay, either this or this. And how much here and how much there? You know, I anticipate us, and I hate to put a date on it. I would say by the June board meeting, we should have a good idea to where we're at as we finalize, you know, the budget. July's when we were going to bring the, the, post the budget forward, is that correct, Bill? So, June board meeting's when we, we will have to make some decisions on, you know, on where we should, you know, have a discussion on some board priorities, as I would say, you know? And, and staff can certainly prepare some of those decision points. Hey, we can either do this, or we can do this. Here's the advantages, disadvantages, and it's about, okay, what do you want us to bring in July so we can post the budget? Does that make sense? We'll have a clear picture on our revenues by then. We'll have a clear picture on a big expenditure that we did put into the projections. I mean, we'll know some of those things at that point, that we'll be able to pinpoint kind of where we're at. If that makes sense?
And, and that says that we should have our goal setting.
That would help. But, you know, I mean, that would absolutely help in some of that.
Absolutely. Yeah, we should.
All right. More things for us to contemplate. So, I think at this point, unless somebody has a burning question, I will move on to, there was a agenda item there, pardon me?
Can we be, have we reinforced the rules?
Can I, can I see that? Thank you. So, next was board reports, and I'm hoping board members don't have any at this point. Okay, good. Then, we do have, we're moving to public comment, but first, we have to reinstate the rules in order to do that.